Good morning. The Prince George's County Planning Board is now in session. It is September 26th, and as always, we will begin with a moment of silence for those who have passed on. I'm going to ask that we remember the victims of Tropical Storm Immelda, which produced the devastating floods in East Texas. So far, five people are deceased. Suzanne Wang, actress and TV personality. Robert Hunter, songwriter for The Grateful Dead. I'm sure some of you are familiar with The Grateful Dead. Aaron Eisenberg, known for his role on Star Trek: Deep Space Nine. Carl Ruiz, celebrity chef, frequent appearances on the Food Network channel. And then finally, I'd like to have a remember Emily Clyburn, who at 80 years young was the wife of Jim Clyburn, U.S. House of Representatives Majority Whip. They met as students at South Carolina State University while protesting segregation at an Orangeburg drugstore counter. She was a longtime librarian and advocate for education and died after decades-long battle with diabetes. I do want to, the reason I save this for last is because she was a close friend of our own Commissioner Shawnee Washington. So, and I didn't know if you had anything to add, either of you, you had anything to add?
No, just that my dad was jailed with him.
Your dad was jailed with them? Okay, so see, they were championing civil rights as well. Okay. So, for those of you who may have suffered a loss of which I am unaware, our hearts go out to you as well. If we may have a moment of silence. Thank you. Again, this is our last planning board meeting in the month of September. It is Hispanic Heritage Month. There are brochures in the back. We celebrate that through October the 15th. So, we want to remember to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It is Classical Music Month. I don't know who has an appreciation for classical music or who has talents in this area, but we celebrate you. It is International Women's Friendship Month. Yeah, yeah. Celebrate your women friends because we are awesome. It is National Prostate Awareness, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Men, you must get checked regularly. I understand it's not pleasant. Women have our own unpleasant examinations, but please get checked out. It saves lives. It saves lives. And we know there are many people, we know many people whose lives have been saved by early detection. So, please get yourselves checked regularly. Women, nudge the men in your life. And also, it is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Women, you have to get checked out as well. It is also National Suicide Prevention Month. I've been watching some things on the news, and suicide is on the rise for pretty much every segment of our society. Young teens, young folks, and it apparently seems to be the number one cause of police deaths and law enforcement deaths, more so than murders and natural causes, and that's pretty egregious. So, if you see someone that you sense is in trouble, help them out, point them in the right direction to get some help. I also want to point out that we're having some, okay, well, I'll come back to that. September 26th, 1789, Thomas Jefferson was appointed Secretary of State, and John Jay became the first Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. September 26th, 1914, all of these days are September 26th. The Federal Trade Commission was formed to regulate interstate commerce. 1957, iconic musical West Side Story appeared, premiered in New York City. 1964, the debut of Gilligan's Island on TV. I won't ask you to sing the theme song, but I bet many of you know it. 1969, the, there we go. There we go. And the prize goes to our planning director, Andre Checkley. 1969, The Beatles released Abbey Road. 1975 was the premiere of, what do you call that? Well, an interesting movie, The Rocky Horror Picture Show. So, I bet many of you have seen it. I have too. 1984 saw the release of his royal purpleness movie, Purple Rain. And finally, 1986, William Rehnquist was sworn in as Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. 1995 was the premiere of JFK Junior's George Magazine. And I don't know if former vice chair of the Planning Board is listening, but this seemed to be his favorite TV show. And 2010 was the premiere of Downton Abbey. If you see Mr. Stone, make sure, make sure that you tell him that this, today was the premiere of his favorite TV show, and, and it's now playing in the movie, and many people we know were there for the premiere of that. We also have several announcements. It is, this is really big news. It is International Active Aging Week, and we are proud to celebrate and redefine active with our amazing, beautiful, iconic, lovely, wonderful, fabulous seniors who are ages 60 and better. Better. And the Department of Parks and Recreation has plenty of free activities and fitness classes. So, you know, on that side of the room, they don't know anything about that. On this side of the room, we're well acquainted with that. We know too much about it. I would remark that on October the 5th, it is Kinderfest. It is a fabulous activity. Bring your kids. It is at Watkins Park. It is our annual festival. It's filled with carnival games, hay rides, build a scarecrow, pony rides, and so much pumpkin patches, and so much more. It's going to be at Watkins Regional Park Saturday, October the 5th, and starting from 12, at 12 noon. We have our next budget forum at Sat, on Saturday, I mean, excuse me, on Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM. It will be at Harmony Hall in Fort Washington. And there are flyers in the back. We want to hear from you about what you would like to see in our FY 2021 budget. And then finally, this Saturday, two days from today only, for those of you who are stressed, who might need to savor some good food and more, we have Relax Wine and Undine with Us, which will be held on the grounds of the Bowie Bay Sox from Saturday from noon to 7:00 PM. And it's featuring lots of music, Jeff Bradshaw, Secret Society, Six Pack Rodeo, lots of food, Jerry Seafood, Timothy Dean, Rips, and so many more restaurants, and, and some wine from some various wineries. It just doesn't get any better than that. So, we invite you to come participate with that. And without, oh, and then finally, I want to say happy birthday to Jordan Baucham-Cobert. Jordan Baucham-Cobert is the Census Outreach Coordinator that we hired to, to really reach out to everyone in our Prince George's community for our Census 2020 participation. I chair the Complete Count Committee for Prince George's County, and she is, and she is the fabulous outreach coordinator who does this on a daily basis, day in and day out, all hours of the day and night, and she's ubiquitous, actually. And I know we typically, Ryan typically show our Census logo up there on the screen, but it is imperative, how many of you in the audience live in Prince George's? This, thank you. The Census, Census 2020, Census Day is April 1st, 2020. You will get a form in the mail. You can complete it by online, or you can complete it by mailing the form back, or you can go to libraries or participate, and they're having, they're helping people register. But it is imperative that people fill out the census form and send it back. We, we in Prince George's County lose $18,250 per person for everyone who has not counted. In 2010, that total was $363 million that we lost, that would go to education, transportation improvements, and so much more, so many more benefits that we could stand in Prince George's County. And we were one of the most undercounted areas in the region. Prince George's County cannot afford to lose any money. We want to ensure that everyone is counted, from the newborn babies up to every senior citizen, everywhere. It is safe, it is imperative that we are counted. So, are you all with me? Are we Prince George's proud? Are we proud to be counted? Okay, make sure we do that. Proud to be counted. We are not giving up the money, okay? Got it? So, just keep remembering that, and many of you are very active in your respective communities, so we need you to be trusted ambassadors and keep spreading the word. Thank you. Without further ado, we're proceeding with our agenda. I'm starting with item eight, followed by nine, 10, and 11. Jessica. All right. Well, and, okay.
Good morning.
Ms. Tiffany Williams Jennings.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Hewlett and members of the Planning Board. For the record, I am Tiffany Williams Jennings with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Before you is item number eight, Vacation Petition V-18007 for Quincy Manor. The purpose of this petition is to vacate townhouse lots and parcels which were created by plots recorded among the land records of Prince George's County. The total area to be vacated is 17.03 acres. The subject site is located in the city of Hyattville within Planning Area 69 and Council District 5. More specifically, the site is on the north and south sides of Newton Street and Madison Way, and along the east and west sides of 54th and 55th Avenue, south of the intersection of Quincy Streets and 55th Avenue. The subject site is located in the R-18 and R-35 zones. The site is also located in the Development District Overlay Zone, and it conforms to the land use recommendations of the 1994 approved Master Plan and Sectional Map Amendment for Bladensburg, New Carrollton, and the vicinity. The aerial map shows that the site is currently improved with multifamily residential development and a community building. The site map shows the topography. There are no streams or wetlands on the property. The Master Plan Right-of-Way map shows land over road, a master plan arterial right-of-way north and east of the site. The property owner and petitioner requests to vacate townhouse lots and seven parcels, areas being all of plots 1 through 9 of the Quincy Manor subdivision. The area being vacated is improved with multifamily residential development and existing community building, as mentioned previously. The townhouse lotting pattern was established pursuant to the approvals of preliminary plan of subdivision 4-08022 and detailed site plan 09013, which were approved for 404 single-family attached residential units and a community building. However, the townhouse development was never constructed. Detailed site plan 0901301 for Quincy Manor, which is being processed concurrently with the subject vacation petition, requests the removal of the prior DSP approval for townhouse development and the validation of existing multifamily development. DSP 0901301 will be heard immediately, hopefully, following this case. Staff finds the vacation petition V-18007 for Quincy Manor does comply with the requirements of Section 24112 of the subdivision regulations as set forth in the technical staff report. Staff recommends approval of vacation petition V-10, 18007. This concludes staff's presentation. Are there any questions?
Nope. Are there any questions of the board, from the board? No, thank you.
Madam Chair, real quick, I just, one point of clarification. The project is not located within the city of Hyattville. It's right outside the boundary, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ru-
Thank you, yes, correction, it is right outside.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. Ben and Chair, members of the board, Director Norman Rivera, here today representing the applicant. This case and next two are all basically the same issue. The owner does not wish to pursue the revitalization, to convert these existing multifamily-
Yep, the microphone.
Sorry. Let me start over. Norman Rivera, for the record, representing the owner of the applicant. Back in 2009, we processed townhouse DSP and record plots. There's new ownership, and he do not wish to pursue the townhouse redevelopment, and they'd rather leave the apartments as is. It'll provide high-quality, affordable housing in the area. So, these three cases are all companion cases, so you might want to put my testimony with the other two, or I'll testify in each one separately. But the three approvals together basically erase the townhouse approval. The vacation petition allows the lots to be vacated, and then we're going to record new lots that'll look like those large red areas there to incorporate the existing multifamily buildings within the larger lots, so that the existing apartments can be subdivided that manner. Thank you.
So, are there any questions of Mr. Rivera at this time? Mr. Rivera, please, please stay put. We have someone who just signed up to speak. I don't know whether they're in support or against the vacation of these lots, so. Ms. Rutgers, can you? Please, please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Nana Malaya Rutgers. I'm a resident in Bladensburg, not too far from where Quincy Manor is. I'm here mainly to stand in support of the low-income housing maintaining in the area, and just had a question in terms of if there were any other additional plans for the property that maybe weren't stated so far. I'm a new resident.
Well, we have another, we have other cases. Do you have today's agenda and the staff reports?
I have today's agenda.
Do you have the staff reports?
No, I don't.
Can we, someone get, okay, we'll get you the staff reports, because we do have, in order to proceed with what they, the plans that they do have, they have to vacate this plan, and Mr. Hunt right here, or Mr. Rivera, will help you.
Okay.
Mr., let me ask you this question. So, they'll show you, Mr. Rivera, do you need some time to talk with Ms. Rutgers?
I can answer that question very quickly, and here's the staff.
Even before we get to the next case? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Simply put, there are no plans to do anything additional to the site, so it's back to what it exactly is today. There's no new plans. If there were to be plans, we'd have to file a revision to the DSP, and there's nothing on the radar at all. Thank you.
Okay, does that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak on this matter? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve V-18007.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to proceed with companion cases nine and 10, which are the detailed site plan and the departure from parking and loading for Quincy Manor as well. And when we finish with that, we're going to go back to the item that was continued from last week, which was the mandatory referral for Brandywine Solar Project.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. For the record, this is Henry Zhang with Urban Design Section. The item in front of you is item nine, the detailed site plan. Item 10 is a departure from the parking and loading spaces required. I just would like to, I have the same-
We're going to incorporate the presentation and the testimony from item six into, the pertinent parts into item, I mean, excuse me, item eight into nine and 10.
Okay, thank you. I would just add some additional information. As stated previously, the site was approved, has approved the detailed site plan back in 2010, and then the applicant, I mean, the prior owner built this clubhouse already, and as the applicant's attorney indicated, that the new owner changed their mind, they're no longer pursuing the townhouses here. This is just to show you what's the original approved, and then what they tried to achieve here. This exhibit, the clubhouse is located right over here. The applicant already, I mean, the prior owner built the clubhouse. This amendment basically tried to validate all those existing buildings built in the 50s, and then at the same time, to validate, because none of those buildings has a valid use and occupancy permit. But there's no improvement proposed in this detailed site plan. Since no improvement-
Can you bring the microphone just a tad closer?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Since there's no improvement proposed in this detailed site plan, there are exempt from the Development District Overlay standards. However, the existing multifamily building here cannot meet full regulations in the residential zone, as stated in 27442, specifically D-E-G-H regarding lot frontage, front yard distance between buildings, and for parcels L-M-N, L-M-N, and also G, 27442H, I'm sorry, H, for the overall density of this project. The three criteria for the variance application has been completely met. You can see this on the staff report, page 7. There's a detailed discussion. Since the board just approved vacation, and then this detailed site plan will no longer be restricted by this condition attached to the 4-08022, excuse me. Since this amendment is trying to remove all those previous approved detailed site plan, so none of the condition of the previous approved detailed site plan apply to this 01 revision. Item 10 is a departure, basically, the applicant is asking for a reduction of 647 parking According to the current parking ratio and the calculation, they need 888 park, off-street parking spaces. This development only has 241 off-street parking spaces, therefore, they need a reduction of 647 spaces. And once again, those criterias for DPLS, as stated in Section 2758AB7, has been met page 8 to 12 of the staff report. And then no agency opposed the approval of detailed site plan and DPLS. I have some pictures taken for the existing development here. This is the clubhouse built in accordance with the approved detailed site plan, and those are the pictures of the existing buildings. I'm sorry. The urban design staff recommend Planning Board adopt the finding of this report and approve DPLS-473 for a reduction of 647 parking spaces. And also detailed site plan, DSP 09013-01 for Quincy Manor include variances from Section 27442D-E-G-H for parcels M-N, excuse me, L-M-N, and also for overall density for the entire development. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions of Mr. Zhang at this time? Mr. Rivera.
Good morning again, Norman Rivera, representing the applicant in these two cases, nine and 10. We have nothing to add to what Mr. Zhang just said about the reports. We ask for your support of the recommendations, and it basically, it's just to validate the existing multifamily units on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, is there anyone else here to speak on this matter? There's no one else on the sign-up sheet? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DPLS-473 as well as DSP-09013-01, along with the variances from Section 27-442D-E-G-H, along with the associated condition as outlined in staff report.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 11. While you're, while we're setting up there, I just meant to tell you that in my announcements this morning, I was remiss in not celebrating that the Washington Nets are in the playoffs, right? We got Nets fans in the house? Okay. Wait a minute, yes. Are you Orioles? Microphone. Wait, wait, what was that?
The New York Yankees run the Eastern Division, so.
There we go, there we go. The Yankees won the Eastern Division. Okay, come on, come on. Okay, there we go. Also, the Washington Mystics are in the WNBA Finals.
That's a good one, too.
Against the Connecticut Sun, and let's bring home the championship, ladies, right? Let's do that, right? I see our vice, former vice chair of the Planning Board has joined us. Did anybody tell him his comments, what I talked about today? It's the, today, September 26th, 2010, was the premiere of Downton Abbey. All right, okay. All right, so.
... The Prince George's Community College Performing Arts Center.
Tonight.
We didn't ask you to come in here and make announcements, Mr. Stone.
You're not a part of the agenda, Mr. Stone. You're not a part of this agenda.
Okay, all right, but this is, this is a big deal, though. So, we really need to honor and celebrate, first of all, our president of Prince George's Community College, the Honorable Dr. Charlene Dukes. Okay. She's done, she's done so much for Prince George's Community College, and as you've seen, the Culinary Center, which is beautiful and magnificent. We now also have the grand opening of the Performing Arts Center at the Prince George's Community College, which is fabulous. And we have our, are you former chair now, or are you still chair?
I'm the immediate past chair.
Okay, he's the immediate past chair of the Prince George's Community College, and who is in here celebrating Prince George's Community College. So, thank you. Now, Mrs. Zhang.
And please leave.
Good morning.
Oh, my goodness.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Zhang, you're on.
Members of the Planning Board. Good morning. For the record, I'm Fatima Hassan with Special Projects Section of Countywide Planning. This, the project here, the proposed Brandywine Solar Project came before you last week, and we're continuing, continuing it today. I'd like to say that the staff has not met on, you know, a letter that came in yesterday. So, and I don't know if you're familiar with it. I would defer to the applicant to explain the letter, but we received it late yesterday. However, our recommendations have not changed on this. I'd be happy to go through them with you, but we went through this last week. So, it's, it's up to you what, which, how you would like to proceed, but we do have, we did receive a letter yesterday, late yesterday, regarding this project.
I don't think we have a copy of the letter.
Yeah, I don't think it was online, and we didn't get it over email, so I don't know if the applicant's going to introduce that, but we can probably leave them that opportunity. Yeah, I don't think we've seen it. I haven't seen the letter, I don't think any of us have, so let's let the applicant go through that. Thank you.
We have our horn here representing the applicant, Carrie Neary.
Mr. Horn, can you adjust the microphone?
Yes. Thank you. Good morning. For the record, Arthur Horn, the law officer, shipping on horn, here on behalf of the applicant, Summer Ridge, represented by Ms. Neary. As we mentioned before, we also have with us community activist and supporter of the project in the Brandywine area, Ms. Mary Murphy. And as you all remember, I guess, maybe with the exception of Ms. Washington, we were here last week, and we went through the presentation thoroughly, and again, I thank the board for its patience, and certainly thank the staff for its patience as we went through trying to change the recommendation of the mandatory referral from a recommendation of not support to support, because it's our contention that we do meet the guidelines as set forth by the staff, in that we are in the area that is not necessarily on the list of priorities. We're in the lowest priority, but once we're in the lowest priority and recognize that, the dual-use guidelines as set forth by your, or guidelines, we are meeting that criteria. I do have four items to introduce here this morning, as well as a video. As the board may recall, the last time we were here- As the board may recall, the last time we were here, you indicated that you wanted to see some pictures of the site and we did get a chance to go out to the site and take some pictures, which I would turn in. We also have a video, I don't know if Mrs. Zhang recognized, but we put it, had it added this morning to the presentation that if the board is interested, we can present that. So, I do, I want to, what I want to submit into the record this morning, again, we already have applicant exhibit one from last week, would be, two, three, and four would be, first, the pictures showing the site visit that we took. Also have a, a, a letter that we sent to Ms. Hassan yesterday indicating that, in fact, the letter from, that indicates some of the guidelines that soil conservation wants to see, that we're willing to do that, and we listed that out. We also have a letter that Ms. Hassan received from the actual property owner regarding the site. And then last but not least, I have the staff report that talked about if this board were to approve this or make the mandatory referral suggestion of support, you know, how we can meet those with some minor edits to those conditions. So, I'd like to introduce those four items here this morning, if I could. So, that's one.
So, let me ask you this. Mrs. Hassan, the, the letter dated September twenty-fifth, was that before the, or after the cutoff time?
To be submitted to the planning board.
It was, do I have to add it as a, as a exhibit now or did it come in before noon?
No, it did not come in before noon.
Okay, so we're going to, yes.
You have copies of it. Thank you. This is not the same letter.
So, you're handing out the letter now, Mr. Cosby?
No, he's handing out, he is handing out a letter that, from the property owner that, property owner sent to him.
Okay, I need to get, do we all have the letter?
That I sent.
That you submitted?
Here, here it is, right here.
Okay, so that has to be, and it actually, let's go.
Well, I was saying, I've got four, four items.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Let me, let me go back to this letter that, that you have written. Is that okay? Can I, can I submit that as?
Sure.
I would like to identify this as applicant's exhibit number three because we actually had two exhibits last week.
Okay.
So, we had the letter from Prince George's Green Organization as well. Okay, so now, so this, this, okay. So, this letter from Shipley and Horn, from, from Mr. Horn dated September twenty-fifth yesterday will be accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number three. If we can, hold on one second. Commissioner Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to indicate that I'll be abstaining from this case. I've not had an opportunity to review the testimony from last week, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so this is number three.
That's three, that's four, that's five.
What's number four?
Number four is a letter from the property owner to Mrs. Hassan.
Okay, do I have that? I don't have that yet.
That was, that right there.
They have that, okay.
Mr. Horn, is that, is that the September twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen letter?
Yes, sir.
From Mr. Dutch?
That's correct.
And he's the property owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so we're having that marked and accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number four.
Number five is a picture taken by the applicant of the site, gives the perspective both from cross-trail roads and actually inside the perspective of the, of the site.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you please repeat that? It's, it's a, it's a what? It's a?
It's photographs.
It's a view? Yeah.
Of, of the, of the site. It shows the buffer that will remain on crossroad trails. It says outside, and then it shows what the property actually looks like on the inside once you go inside beyond that buffer.
Okay, so these photos, this, this compilation of photos will be marked and accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number five.
Companion with that, there's a video that was shot as Mr. Donner indicated, perhaps we'd like to have a video. We did take a video of that and it's available for the board to watch. I think it's only like three minutes if they want to see that as well.
I'd like to see it, Madam Chair.
Okay, so.
Is there popcorn with it?
Okay, we're going to have the video that you, you have it there to ready to show?
Actually, I don't have the video.
Yeah, it, it, your staff put it on there this morning.
It was put on, okay, all right, I'll bring it up.
Can you do that? Can you help her?
Okay.
Yes, we do have.
Right here?
So, we'll have the video marked and accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number six.
And, and Ms. Neary, if you don't mind, she can actually, she took it, she can actually narrate what she's.
Okay, do you want the other microphone?
If you, if you don't mind.
Okay. So, do, are you finished with that big thing, that big folder?
No, not quite.
Okay.
Just state your name for the record.
Carrie Neary with Summer Ridge Energy. So, I was out there yesterday and this is the interior, sorry, this is the interior of the property. As you can see, it's not thick woods that you're, you're looking at. If you look at the photos from crossroad trail, it looks like it's very thick forest. It's very hard to see, but once you're inside the facility, it's really prickly bushes. My legs are actually very scratched up today with trees fallen. It's, it's very open, so that, you know, I think that the property is deceiving from the road once you actually get inside. It's, it's thin bushes, dead wood. That's really what we're seeing. And that's, I'm, I'm just kind of walking around the property. You might see some of the perk tests from where the sewage facility was being tested. Those would be into the pipes that you see, but in general, it's just, it's pretty open with a lot of dead trees.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
And, I mean, it's pretty much the same, and we just want to remind the board that that there's no streams or water or anything out there as well. And then lastly, on the submittal list, again, as we talked about last week, the, the staff report itself said, you know, if the planning, should the planning board recommend approval, the following modifications to be proposed are recommended. And we just accepted most of those with some few modifications, and I have a blue line, outline of that to be submitted as applicant six.
Well, the video.
Oh, video six?
Six.
Okay, this will be seven.
Okay.
You have some of those copies. Okay.
So, okay.
So, so Madam Chair, if, if I can just.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me mark this. Seven. Okay, the video is number six, and these are perspect, these are modifications that you are, are recommending. Should we, should we recommend approval? Because ours is only a recommendation.
Yes, it's a recommendation. And again, I, I, I thank you again for your patience for allowing us to go through this in such detail because, again, as we pointed out last week, you know, we understand and appreciate, you know, what staff's recommendations are in this area and why they did have such a recommendation. But our point was that this particular property in this particular location is different than what's in the region as a whole and that this property, as you recall, was designated for sewage facility. It has, as one of the exhibits, I guess applicant's exhibit one can show you, there's dumping on the site including old vehicle and all, and even the soil conservation people say this is not really prime farm, it's more residential than it is for agriculture. And I think what we're proposing is to make the soils better, to improve the woodland area, to provide for environmental assistance to people in the community and in the, to the environment as a whole. And we are trying to, you know, tie this into if, as an educational purpose as well. As you note in our letter as exhibit number three, we indicated that, you know, we would work with Park and Planning or the Prince George's and/or the Prince George's County Board of Education to, to make sure that, that this area, and this is, again, let me just remind the board, this is only a four acre site with reference to the, the actual panel, so it's very small. And so, you know, again, it could be an opportunity for education because we're proposing to have both the pollinated honeybees and the monarch butterfly habitat established there.
So, Ms. Horn, let me stop you because, because these exhibits are just coming in today, I don't, we haven't had the chance to really pour over them as we should. So, right now, I'm, I'm looking at your letter that you're referring to applicant's exhibit number three, so I just want to make sure I'm grasping what you're proposing. So, you're saying, from your perspective, you meet all of the guidelines with the exception of woodland conservation?
Correct.
And then to address woodland conservation, you're saying, you're, you're proposing to mitigate the tree removal by replanting in a ratio of two to one, which, which are the guidelines for woodland conservation under similar circumstances. Okay. So, to be planted in the immediate vicinity of the project. Okay.
On crossroad trails. We already have that worked out with the property owner down there.
Okay, a forest stewardship plan for the remaining woodland area.
Correct.
Okay. So, is that designed to help to do the best you can to avoid those naturally, the trees which, you know, naturally fall after some time? Is to preserve as many as possible?
It is. I'm not sure if a stewardship plan would be required anyway for, I, I'd have to defer elected to staff on that, but I mean, certainly are willing to do that and, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not, I don't want to make a statement if it turns out to be inaccurate, but we're willing to do that. And it was a recommendation by the soils conservation group.
Okay, okay. And then to maximize the pollinator habitat for both monarch butterflies and the honeybees and then use the honey production as a dual use. Have an education component.
So, we reached out to the Parks Department. Again, a week's a very short time to reach anybody, and we were given the names of three individuals, and all three of the individuals we tried to reach all week were unsuccessful. The only individual that we.
It's a National Recreation and Parks Association conference.
Oh, that's why. No wonder, because it was like, my gosh, nobody works here anymore. So, we tried, we tried all week, but, but Mr. Schaefer was very, very kind, fresh shape of the trails, who was the one who provided us with the information and, and the lead to, to be able to try to track these individuals down. So, no wonder we couldn't reach anybody. But anyway, again, as we say, we, we are certainly willing to work with them on that, on this trail braising adventure.
All right, that's what applicant's exhibit three proposes. Now, let me see what, what's four from the property owner?
It just talks about his property and, and, you know, the use.
Okay, let me see what number five does. Okay, number six was the video, and then number seven. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure I follow. Okay, so you can go ahead with yours now.
And the, and the seven was, you know, again, the staff report itself had a list of proposed conditions, and as you see outlined in a blue was some of the proposed amendments to that. Condition four talks about the entire woodland conservation should be provided on site, and I just add it to the greatest extent possible because obviously we can't do that, but, you know, we will, to the greatest extent possible, keep as much woodland conservation on site.
Mr. Horn, and I'm, who's going to determine to the greatest extent possible?
Well, I think, you know, the combination of the applicant and, you know, when you come in for the N R I, you can say, this is the layout of the solar farm and, you know, this is the area that we need to be able to place it, and there will be no additional trees removed other than what's needed for the solar farm array to, to, to be laid out.
So, is the applicant that's going to determine it or will it staff determine? That's, that's my question.
Well, I think it's going to be a combination of both. I think because the, you know, what we proposed through the array has already been presented, and as far as the location, layout and all, it's pretty much set. And I think, you know, staff would be able to, to see if the applicant is attempting to remove additional trees that may not be necessary. I mean, I think it could be a combination of the two.
And who rules out in a tie?
Well, I think, well, I think we just have to have some.
But that's standard language.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we have to have some confidence that, in fact, that the parties are willing to work together. We're not at odds with each other. We're, we're, we're trying to figure out a way to, to work this out if possible. So, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think it'll reach that point, but anyway, in condition five, you know, we added, it says, no woodland conservation can be credited in the master plan right away, which we agreed with, but I wanted to state the applicant will be utilizing that woodland in the right away that you saw in applicant six for the buffering of the site. So, the concern about, you know, the visibility of this solar array from crossroad trails will not be a problem because we're, we're leaving that woodland area intact. Condition nine talks about the applicant's will preserve a minimum, and it said thirty feet in it. Again, we mentioned last week that twenty feet is the standard that's being adopted by the county now when it comes to utility sites next to the residential, the, the new zoning ordinance. And I added some additional language, said invasive species should be removed with the existing woodland buffer areas. That's what it says. But I put down, unless an alternative management plan is established with the environmental section of Park and Planning. And I put that down because in talking with staff, they did not say to me, remove it. They said, oh, we have a management, invasive species management plan. Now, that may mean removing it, I don't know, but that's what they called it. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page. Either we're going to remove it or it's going to be managed, you know, whatever it is. So, I just added that just to be clear. It can either be removed or, you know, a management plan established, and I only received that information from environmental directly, so I just put that in there just to try to make it clear. But otherwise, as I said, we meet, we meet the criteria that they say, and we recognize that this, this is a case of first impression. We recognize that, you know, that it's easy to say, well, let's, let's keep things square in a box, but in this particular case, we think we are meeting the criteria of your guidelines and actually improving upon them by suggesting some additional uses and opportunities there that can benefit the whole community, and we would appreciate the planning board giving us consideration in that area.
Okay, so, you have the opportunity to come back up. We may have questions for you, and we may have some now even, but we have a number, we have a couple of people who signed up to speak as well. So, first, let me see if any board members have any questions of you.
Just a quick question to sort of jive together applicant exhibit three, your letter that you're making a couple of other proper conditions or proposals, and applicant exhibit seven where you made some edits. And number four that, that Commissioner Nardola was asking about when you have to the greatest extent possible, if that doesn't happen, so if there's a, if you're not able to actually do it on site, it seems like the proposal you have in your letter, number one, is that you're going to provide in the immediate vicinity of the project site along crossroad trail? So, would you be willing to add something at the end of four just to be clear that any off-site, any off-site conservation additions, or I don't know how we necessarily reworded or replantings, would be within the watershed? So, that way, we're, we're extremely specific that even if it's on crossroad, crossroad trail, probably already meets that criteria, but as we, if we decide to entertain this case, we're opening up the door to other cases coming in. And I want to be clear that any off-site improvements, to whatever extent they do happen. happen, when we're doing replantings, are within the watershed. So, they have, there's a nexus, basically, right? So, you're removing trees, but you're planting them within the same area that would have some sort of environmental impact.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We will agree to that, and agree to that, we agreed to add it to condition, and we agree to that philosophically as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions at this time? So, Ms. Neary, do you wish to speak anymore? Okay, thank you. And Jody Hunt, you signed, Ms. Neary is a proponent, Jody Hunt is also a proponent, but you did not wish to speak?
No, she does, she's not here.
Okay. Well, okay. Ms. Murphy does wish to speak. I knew something was wrong last week.
Good morning. My name is Mary Murphy, and I live at 10904 Cross Road Trail in Brandon, Wayne, Maryland. This project, I'm in favor of the project and everything, but I just wanted to make aware, maybe some of you, of but crossroad trail. It's not a, it's just a trail, just like the word it says, trail. It's a road, country road. We don't have any sidewalks, we don't have any yellow buckets, we don't have any trash pickup, so we just have this. So, when we have projects that come here, we're glad to see them because they do some improvement to our little road because we don't have any improvement from the county. I'd just like to say, this piece of property, I've lived there on Cross Road Trail about 55 years. So, this piece of property was never farmland, so I don't know where they got the idea that this was farmland. It was just homeowners owning a piece of property, and they lost it through tax sale and whatever. But it was just land. One house sat on part of it, not the part that's right here, and there was only a man who lived in a trailer, that lived there for a little while, then he left, and that was the only thing that done for the property. The property, I guess, part of it, the power lines go through there, so it does make it a nice site for the solar panels because they have to hook up to the power lines. So, the power lines would have right-of-ways on part of their property, the road would have right-of-ways on part of their property. So, where she showed you where the trees are falling, that's what's on Cross Road Trail. You see trees. You can come down there and pick up some trees that Pepco has, Pepco has left along the road, people come and pick them up. I don't know what they do with them, whether they burn them or whatever. But I'm just saying, they're saying they're gonna use honeybees and butterflies with the property once they have, if you decide to approve this project. I think that would be a great lesson for kids to learn about honeybees and seeing how the honey is made and everything like that. We do have little butterflies flying around this summer. I haven't seen them before, but they're flying around now. So, I just want to let you know that I hope that you would approve this project. I also want to add that there is solar panels right at the beginning of Cherry Tree Crossing Road on the, which was the old mine site, and most of these properties down here are sand and gravel mining properties, right adjourned to them. The lady was right, it is a rubber fill. They can't get solar panels, but that's another story. And there on the, the Boys and Girls Club was playing there, but the Lions Club had some problems, so now they have solar panels right there. So, that's right at the beginning of Cherry Tree, of Cherry Tree Crossing and 301, and once you come down Cherry Tree Crossing, you go to Cross Road Trail. So, this would be like, in the vicinity, the second solar panel. So, I do agree with them that this should be a good piece of property, and I hope that you would pass this or agree to approve this property. Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Murphy?
Yes. So, since there's not a whole lot that goes on with the cross-trail, what would you like, as a neighbor, to see then, the applicant to do along cross-trail to make it more attractive?
Yes, they could put some sidewalks down there, but I know that ain't gonna happen. You know, I'd just like to guess, if I got to walk from my cousin's house, which is next door, if I walked down the road, a car come, I gotta jump up in the bushes, so my cousin did cut a little space down there for it. If you go widen the road, there are no right-of-ways or the siding of the road, it's just, sometimes you can see the white lines, and sometimes you can't. So, you know, but there isn't nothing to widen because across from them is another sand and gravel mine, pre-county. So, that's what you have down there. That's all you have down there. So, I don't know how you would, it's a little country road with sand and gravel, and they put tile on it, and so that's what it was.
But is there anything that you would like to see the applicant do specifically?
Well, she would only do it in her little section.
Okay.
So, she would widen it, but, you know, if they widen the road, that's just in that little section. No one lives there. No one's on that side where she is, so it wouldn't, you know, it'd just be like, you put a sidewalk there, and it'd be going nowhere. Because there's no, there's no houses or anything, there's a farm further back, and I live coming, coming away from 301, so you get to her property, before you get to my property, it's four houses there. So, that's what you got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, did you have, oh, okay. Ms. Hassan, let me go back to the staff presentation on page 13, slide 13, which is, okay, so that's where you are, okay. So, you know, this is, this is a continuation of the hearing from last week, which was very substantive. This, today, was intended to be very short, which didn't happen. But anyway, my questions to you, we're in agreement, I believe, I just need clarification from you, that the applicant meets the other, pretty much the other guidelines, except for the woodland conservation?
Actually, well, the first priority, woodland conservation on-site is always the first priority, especially in the OS zone. So, that is why staff puts emphasis on that.
Now, with regard to the zones, you have a descending order of priority, and so, but this does fall within the priority, it's just the bottom rung of the priorities. Is that correct?
Yes, but, you know, with the OS zone, that the priority is on-site conservation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so now, you have added conditions, the staff has recommended conditions in our earlier staff report to, that would be of, would be of help if, in fact, this was approved. And you see that the applicant has, have you looked at applicant Exhibit number seven?
Yes.
And do you have any comments on that?
Well, regarding number five, where the applicant says, though applicant will utilize the woodland in the right-of-way for buffering on the site, this is a master plan collector road with a width of 80 feet, so the applicant cannot use, you know, area in the ultimate right-of-way. So, if this, if this road were to be widened, which, you know, it sounds like there may be some desire to do that sometime in the future, then that, that additional width cannot be counted in their woodland, in their woodland conservation. Also, Cross Road Trail is a part of the bikeways plan for Prince George's County as a potential bike trail. So, at some point, a bike trail could be put in, it's on the map in the master plan of transportation. So, those areas that are part of the right-of-way and associated with Cross Road Trail cannot be used for mitigation or preservation.
That's just for counting it, right? So, if they were to use it just to buffer it so you can't see it as much, but it doesn't get counted, then would it matter as much?
I would defer to transportation planning or environmental planning on that for the ultimate answer.
Megan Reiser, Environmental Planning. So, for woodland conservation purposes, they would not be allowed to count the woodland in the right-of-way. I believe for landscape manual requirements, I believe they're, no?
Good morning. For the record, Katina Scholers from Countywide Planning, and I'm sorry, I was just nodding at Megan to make sure that if, because the buffer is 50 feet or less, it's less than 50 feet in some areas with the 80 feet, it would not meet the 35-foot width, which, it has to be 35-foot feet in width to be counted as a landscape credit for woodland conservation.
Yeah, so, but if they don't care about counting, and if they know that they're not gonna count it, but they're just putting in a buffer to shield the view, would that be a problem at all?
It wouldn't be a woodland conservation issue because it couldn't be credited, but it wouldn't be protected either.
Yeah, so if we came in and the county widened the road later on and put in a bike trail, then they would just lose those trees potentially, is what you're saying?
Correct. And then the applicant could also choose to, if they choose to clear it in the future, they might be able to, they would have to come back to revise the plan, but it's not protected woodland, it's not part of the, it would not be part of meeting the requirement.
If I could just add to the point, Jill confirmed for me that when we review mandatory referrals, we also look at other implementation that we would typically apply to, like a development site. So, if it were subject to landscape manual, they would not be able to count the screening in the right-of-way, they would need to provide that buffer on-site. So, it's not subject to the landscape manual, but as part of the review, when we look at these things, we kind of see, you know, how our typical toolbox would apply. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
So, what's being proposed in reality is, what's being proposed in reality could just disappear, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
So, that you can do-
If work in the right-of-way were to occur, then, then the woodland, the existing vegetation in the right-of-way could be cleared.
It could be.
Cleared.
Cleared.
Does the board have any other questions right now?
For, so for staff on applicant Exhibit seven, if we were to go down to number nine, I think there's a question about whether or not that additional language was okay with the environmental section? Unless an alternative management plan is established with the environmental section of the commission? Yes, and also the 20 versus 30 feet.
I'm sorry, there were two number nines, I got confused.
Yes, sorry. So, on applicant Exhibit seven, where they have the additions, there's one change where there's a strikeout of the 30-foot existing woodland buffer area, and there's 20 there. So, that's one point to ask you about. And then the other one is, at the very end, the applicant had indicated that there had been conversations with environmental, the environmental section, and that it was their understanding that they put in the statement, unless an alternative management plan is established with the environmental section of MNC PPC. So, I just wanted to see if that would be consistent with what you guys want.
Sure. I think we'd be okay with, unless the alternative management plan is established. If there's existing invasive species on the property, we typically, through the tree conservation plan review and approval process, invasive species management plan is required, which typically would be a minimum five-year plan, where it would show, you know, what the invasive species are, how it would be treated, and a yearly management plan to come back and make sure that those invasives don't reoccur. As far as the minimum width, I might defer to urban design from a landscape manual perspective. It certainly wouldn't count toward woodland conservation credits at 20 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Good morning. Tom Burke, the Urban Design Section. Sorry, slipped out there.
Old habits.
Yes, as a mandatory referral, this would not be subject to the requirements of the landscape manual.
Okay. Was that it?
I think so. Is there, I mean, anything else?
Oh, God.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions, if anyone else before the applicant?
I do, because I'm trying to understand the, well, number one, with regards to applicant number seven, shouldn't we just strike the first number nine? Because there's two nines, and I'm assuming that the nine that you have is the corrected version that you would like.
The second nine.
Yeah, I think it's the same thing on four and five as well, and the track changes, I think it just added, it just kept that original maybe.
That's my error, yes. Yes, the second nine is the one we're talking about.
Hold on, hold on. Can you elevate the microphone?
Mr. Horn?
Yes, the second, with the, with the blue and the red in there is the one we're talking about.
So, we should strike the other, okay.
Yes, yes.
And that would be also for four as well as five.
Correct. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions, if anyone else before Mr. Horn returns? Okay, Mr. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, thank you all for your patience. We had no intention of having this drag on, but again, we're just asking for your consideration. I think we made our case that this can be something that's positive, and that we would continue to work with staff and the other entities to try to make this a prime area for review. And again, who shows up for supports of solar farms? I mean, when we went to the community meeting, we had, you know, I don't know, maybe half a dozen to 10 people there, everybody was supportive at this location, which was very pleasing to us. And again, we all know crossroad trails, and I just wanna, can't give any assurances, but Mr. Geraldo knows, there's nothing down in that area, so the chances of the roadway being widened across road, it's a road to nowhere. So, I don't, I don't know why it's an 80-foot wide master plan right-of-way, but it is. It would only be 40 feet on outside anyway, not 80. And, I mean, just based on the history and looking at that area and the zoning, I doubt if you have any developments down there that would require the roadway to be widened to the master plan right-of-way. So, that's no guarantee that it'll never happen, but the chances of it happening is very, very rare.
So, and I hear what you're saying. So, I'm thinking, since there may be no chance of ever happening, would you be, would the applicant want to make a condition that if it does happen, then they'll plant some more trees? In other words, if the trees are there, and they, you know, and if it never happens, it never happens, it's a contingency, but in the event that it does happen and the road is widened, will they proffer to put trees somewhere else in another area?
We'll only be there for 25 years, you know, solar farms.
So, then you'd have to put a cap on it, within that 25 years.
Within that 25 years.
Yeah, within that.
I mean, I think we would be willing to do it, it's about an acre of trees, right? So, within the life of the solar facility, if you guys were to clear that for whatever reason, we would be willing to offset that. But just to be clear, I mean, those trees are being used for buffer, so even if we were to plant them off-site somewhere, it wouldn't be the same, but yeah, I mean, yeah, we'd be willing to preserve the trees.
So, okay.
Does that make sense? We wouldn't be able to keep that buffer because there wouldn't be room on the site.
Okay, let me stop for a second, because this is, this was where I was headed to. So, in terms of that, because our staff has brought it up as an issue, that there's a possibility that that buffer would be moved. So, since this has a 25-year life, I think I hear you saying you would proffer to replant trees, should that occur within the 25-year life of that solar energy system?
Yes, we would be, just to be clear, we would be willing to plant trees off-site because there wouldn't be room.
Correct.
So, we would be willing to do that. And just to be clear on the life, it's designed for 25 years, but it could be, it could be a little bit longer, so I'd want to just say the life of the project.
Okay, just say the life of, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just to be also totally clear, at a ratio of two to one, like you've offered in your letter?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so we will work, well, hold on a second. Depending on how the motion goes, if they are proffered that, so can we add that to the recommended conditions, that we would transmit to the Public Service Commission, should this, if this, in fact, does go to the Public Service Commission? And, and make sure we have the appropriate wording, appropriate language, that addresses the life of the solar system. Commissioner Geraldo, you had a comment or question?
The only question I had is, so that would be in line with what Commissioner Donner recommended earlier, that any offsite improvements will be in the watershed? That was in number four, new four?
Yeah, but that was an addition.
Right. So I'm wondering whether or not we want to have them proffers to where they would put any new trees.
Yeah, I think they have proffered that, my understanding, I mean, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they have proffered that.
And what is applied though to?
Yeah, and one of those conditions in there, I think they're going to have to work with staff a little bit just on the language, because one of the conditions in their letter should definitely be incorporated in the staff recommendations if we go forward with this, because that's actually having the ratio of two to one that I want to have in writing, in our transmission, that way it's not just a letter from the applicant, but it's actually a recommendation that they've agreed to with us. And then the other stuff as well, like the honeybees and everything else. I mean, I don't think that would be inconsistent with what they've said at all, or let them disagree if they want to.
And with regards to applicant number, with regards to applicant number three, you have under use honey production as an added dual-use activity that supports agriculture. So how, how does that work out? I mean, who's going to, who's going to get the honey?
Yeah, so we're contacting, we're in the initial conversations with local beekeepers and hives to bring the hives onsite, and we'll be working with a third, I don't make honey, but I'll work with somebody that does. And I don't know, maybe, I don't know where we'll sell it or give it away or what we'll do with it, but, you know.
What number is that?
I actually kind of like that.
Oh, I like it too, but I just want to, you know, the honey could be there, but who's going to, who's going to produce it, who's going to go there and extract the honey?
That would be figured out.
Mr. Geraldo, you know.
That's not our.
We, no, I know we're not, but I'm saying it's a nice proffer, but, but if nobody does anything with it, then it's.
Well, it's a condition, it's a recommended condition that will have to be dealt with. I don't know that we don't normally get that far down into the weeds on the, on the house.
I think there should be a requirement that proffer was made, that they're going to contact local, yeah, just something like that, that's all.
Mr. Geraldo, I saw where the Gaylord at National Harbor has the bee hives on the roof, and they use that honey to serve it in restaurants there. So there are restaurants that are looking for this kind of, I don't think it'll be any problem.
You know what, not only that, hold on a second, we have, our Parks and Recreation Department is working with many, many groups that can, that we can provide to you.
That could be part of the. Educational part two, because you have, you're going to be working with the, with the schools and stuff, and that might be something you could help with the kids and teach them about the process.
Oh, back to our Park and Recreation Department, that you could not reach last week, that would be another kind of discussion that would occur.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does the board have any other questions? Mr. Horn, I take it you're done. Okay.
May I add to the condition?
Okay.
Recommended condition.
Okay.
There was concern about the timing for the offsite planting, and so we were going to recommend a split permit for, to ensure that as part of the issuance of the first permit, that the offsite has been installed before the panels are in place, if that would be a consideration.
Do you have suggested language?
That's what she's.
Prior to issuance of the fine grading permit, all offsite woodland conservation planting shall be installed.
What's that last word, install?
Shall be installed.
I, I think that's right, the only concern I have is just weather and the timing of planting, so I'd want to just be able to use best efforts.
Just comma, weather permitting.
Yeah, best efforts to do that, but just, I don't want to like plant trees that are not going to grow.
Best efforts, comma, at the end of it, weather, comma, weather permitting.
Or, yeah, or maybe we could have it as a condition of like before we close out our grading permit or something like that, that it's, I don't know.
Okay.
Just, we can do it at best, so you want, you want the tree, just so I understand, you want the trees installed prior to the panels being installed, or prior to building permits being issued?
Prior to the, I hear, I see nods, that's.
Okay, so it's, it's hard for us, it's hard for us to promise that prior to building permits being installed, only because of the timing of our financing, but we could definitely do it like at the same time.
As the pen?
As the panels, like.
But they seem to be okay with it, you were saying yes? You're not saying yes? You know what, we're getting in the weeds here.
Yes.
So I'm getting ready to not go with that condition, unless you can fine tune it so that it's workable. We're spending way too much time on this case, we got other cases to hear.
I agree, I mean, I think there's an extent to which we, we should try and be good stewards and, and not be overly regulatory.
Right.
We have a good project here, I think we're making a lot of efforts. It doesn't seem like they're trying to screw over the environment and mess up the area, they're willing to try and put in trees and work with us. I think we should kind of take what we have. It sucks that we can't get everything exactly how we want, but we've only got a week at this, and I hope Mr. Horn is a repeat customer here.
He is.
That, that we will be working in good faith, and I think the applicant has expressed.
So I agree with that, so can we do with the proffered, which was that all the woodland conservation will be done prior to the installation of the panels, does that work for the applicant?
Weather permitting.
Well, she did say weather permitting.
She's not on the record because she's not at the microphone, but she did say weather permitting.
Yeah, weather permitting.
Weather permitting, okay. Are we good? Okay. Is there a motion? Remember, this is a recommendation, okay? We're not the final determiner.
I think the other end would do it. But I'll make a motion that we, that we support, so we're not in the approval or denial stages, right? So I wanted to be clear that we would transmit the staff report and findings, actually going against staff recommendation of this, of not supporting, but actually supporting this, but then adopting the staff recommendations that they put forward in the slides, as amended in applicant exhibit seven with the strikeouts that have also been talked about, and then also amended with applicant exhibit three where they've also, they've offered up a couple additional points. The only things that we're going to be changing in here, and I'll leave it up to staff to work it out with the applicant in good faith, is number four, that we need to put in something about the offsite improvements that, so we have a sentence in there about the entire woodland conservation requirement should be provided to the greatest extent possible onsite, and then dot, 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 and then to the extent that it's not possible to do it onsite, that the offsite improvements will be within the watershed, which I think is consistent with what we've heard today and been proffered by the applicant, and then adding in, in there about the ratio of two to one that you've offered up in your letter, the additional conditions that you've also, or offerings that you've offered up in there. And then on number, I believe it was number five?
Five.
Yeah, number five, that we need to work on the language, but saying something like if, if the woodland, or if the right-of-way does get changed within the lifetime of the project, the trees will be replaced elsewhere, also consistent with the new condition four and a ratio of two to one within the watershed. And then I think you guys are going to have to work out a little bit of the language, but something about the, the issuance of the permitting stage around the same timing as the installation of the solar panels, weather permitting, that the offsite tree improvements should be in place. Obviously, that we don't want trees to be planted if they're going to die, but work out the language with our staff on that. And I think that's all of the changes that have been in here. And then also just accepting all the exhibits that the applicant has offered up today and brought in to help us out with the case.
The 25 years.
Yeah, or the lifetime, I would actually specify the lifetime of the project, because that might, it might extend beyond 25 years.
Okay. That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
I agree. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, goodbye. Items, we're proceeding in this order, five, six, seven, three A and three B. Mr. Burke, you're on. Can you give me six, wait, you guys did, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, here. And this too. Okay, item five, which is the specific design plan for Bavard East.
So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board, I am Thomas Burke with the Urban Design Section, and the project before you is listed as item number five on the agenda for specific design plan SDP 0516-02 for Bavard East, which includes type two tree conservation plan TCP 2074-06-02. The applicant is seeking approval of an amendment to the previously approved SDP for phase four only, to allow changes to the stormwater management facilities and the adjustment of 10 lots and one parcel.
Yes.
Couldn't verify subscription.
The site is located in the southwestern portion of Prince George's County in Planning Area 81B, Council District Nine. More specifically, the site is located on the west, sorry, it's located on Piscataway Road to the west and then Thrift Road to the southeast. The site is surrounded by a variety of residentially zoned and developed properties. A portion of the site lies within Aviation Polis Area Six for Hyde Field to the north. This aerial photo illustrates the pre-development conditions of the property, showing that the site is partially wooded with fallow farm fields interspersed. This map shows the topography of the site relative to the approved layout with phase four shown here in the northwestern corner. The master plan arterial right-of-way A65 crosses through the site and has been incorporated into the subdivision. This map shows the overall SDP for the Bavard East subdivision as previously approved and platted, with phase four the subject of this application highlighted here in yellow. The other phases of Bavard East are identified here on this plan. In 2006, the district council affirmed the planning board approval for phase four. In 2010, Maryland Department of the Environment implemented a statewide stormwater management program adopted by Prince George's County with grandfathering provisions. This phase of the project did not meet necessary benchmarks and that grandfathering lapsed. The applicant is therefore seeking approval of this SDP to upgrade the stormwater management devices for phase four only, shown, the devices shown here in blue, to bring those proposed facilities into compliance with current stormwater management best management practices. Specifically, the previously approved ponds are being replaced with submerged gravel wetlands. The design of these devices required refinements to the onsite grading, which resulted in minor adjustments to an internal road here, and 10 of the platted lots shown along here as well, and did not result in any loss of the required onsite private recreation facilities here. The 10 lots located in this section and the road identified on the plan as Parsley Sprig Road is shown here, where it was once a through road connecting to Baroque Road to the north. The applicant is now proposing to vacate this section and establish a T-turnaround here at Parsley Sprig Road. A condition requiring the road vacation prior to permit approval has been included in the recommendation section of the staff report. The Urban Design Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve specific design plan SDP 0516-02 and TCP 2074-06-02 for Bavard East Phase Four, with the conditions found on page 16 of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Are there questions of Mr. Burke at this time? Thank you, Mr. Ship.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, William Ship with O'Malley Miles Law Offices in Greenbelt. We completely agree with staff, I will update you just to let you know that the district council did approve our architecture on the ninth, and that we went back out to the community on the 12th and had a meeting to update them on that and on this plan and other issues of ongoing concern. We've pledged to keep meeting with them with that, you know, Mr. Horn used all my time, so.
And everybody else.
I'm going to yield to questions.
Thank you. Mr. Younger signed up, but no one wishes to speak, Mr. Younger. Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else who did wish to speak? Does the board have any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDP-0516-02 and TCP 2-074-06-02, along with the associated conditions outlined in staff's report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. Opposed, the ayes have it, and that's how we do it, okay. Item six, followed by seven. Which were followed by three A and then probably lunch break and then three B.
She wants the color.
Mr. Kennedy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board for the record, my name is Rastafari Kennedy II with the subject in zoning section. The subject application before you is the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Conservation Plan. The proposal is for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling on vacant property within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area for East Hyattsville Lot 21 Block F. The subject application also includes a request for three variances, which I will discuss in depth at the end of my presentation. The site's general location in the county can be seen here, and more specifically, shown is that the property is located within Planning Area 68 within Council District Five. The site vicinity map shows the property's location in red within the neighborhood, including the surrounding roads and property boundaries. The subject site is located approximately 670 feet southeast of the intersection of Emerson Road and 50th Avenue. The subject property is located within the R-55 zone and is surrounded by identically zoned developed single-family residential properties within the East Hyattsville Prince George's County subdivision, Emerson Street, a subject property to the north. The subject property is located within the IDO zone in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. This aerial photograph shows entire property boundary outlined in red, including surrounding development. This map of the site shows the natural conditions of the area, showing the topography as delineated within contour lines in red and the property boundary delineated in purple. Decatur Street and Master Plan Collector lies to the south of the subject site, and Kennelworth Avenue and Master Plan Arteria Road lies to the east of the subject site. This map of the site shows entirety of the site and its existing conditions. Subject site is currently undeveloped.
Subject site is currently undeveloped. This site plan shows entirety of the site with existing driveway to be removed shown in pink. The subject site and proposed single-family detached dwelling are both outlined in red. As mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the applicant has filed three variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance for the minimum net lot area, minimum lot width at the front building line, and minimum side yard setbacks. More specifically, the applicant is requesting relief from sections 27, 442, B, D, and E of the zoning ordinance respectfully. Staff is in support of the variances for the minimum net lot area and minimum lot width at the front building line due to the time of creation of the subject property and the subject property's location within the floodplain. Without these variances, the applicant would not have the ability to develop the subject property. Staff is not in support of the variances to the side yard setbacks where the applicant requests a 7.5 setback on each side of the dwelling instead of the required eight and nine-foot side yard setbacks. Staff did not find the criteria for approval of a variance was met as outlined starting on page fourteen of the technical staff report. Specifically, the strict application of subtitle 27 will not result in a particular and unusual practical difficulties to the owner of the property. Number one, the applicant would still be able to develop the lot for its intended purposes should the variance not be granted. And number two, there is also additional area available on the lot to expand the footprint of the proposed dwelling within the rear yard where the same square footage can be achieved. The evaluation of the variance was based off the findings that set forth in 27-230 of the zoning ordinance. Irrespective of surrounding approvals, staff acknowledges that there are dwelling units in neighborhood that do and do not meet the side yard setbacks under the current zoning regulations. However, the majority of the dwellings not meeting the side yard setbacks required today were developed under, with the minimum side yard setbacks was seven feet. Based off the strict adherence to the criteria contained in 27-230, staff recommended disapproval of the variances to the side yard setbacks. This is the front yard elevations showing what the house would look from the front. And this is a side yard elevations for the single-family detached dwelling. In conclusion, staff is of the opinion that the requested variances for the minimum net lot area and minimum lot width at the front building line are justified as contained in the staff, within the staff report. Staff is of the opinion that the requested variance for the minimum side yard setback is not justified as contained within the staff report. With this, staff recommends the planning board approve CP 18002 for East Hyattsville Lot 21 Block F with the recommended conditions. Approve variances to Section 27-442B and D of the zoning ordinance and disapprove variances to Section 27-442E. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Kennedy?
Can you just?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. The disapproval of the variance Section 27-442E, can you explain that a little further?
If you, if I can for a second, because that's one of the things I wanted to address with Mr. Rivera. So, Mr. Rivera, if you can come forward for a second about that. And I know you, Mr. Kennedy can repeat that, but please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, still. Norman Rivera for the record, representing Whirlline Properties. And next to me is Mr. Whirlline.
Okay, so let me, so I know you're gonna, you have a presentation to give, but I think in terms of the variances, the variances, two are being recommended for approval and the one with regard to the side yard is not being recommended for approval. And it doesn't appear to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kennedy, it doesn't appear to me that, that our, Mr. Kennedy or our staff has any real heartburn about it. It's just that it, from their perspective, it doesn't meet the requirements of the variance. As I under, the required findings of the variance, in terms of exceptional narrowness and what have you. So, I think that if I, to understand you correctly, the side, the current side yard requirements are eight feet and this is 7.5, right?
Yes, and so, and another thing I would like to submit into the record is in 1949, I have eight copies of it. In 1949, the zoning ordinance stated that you can, there was an exemption, if you, per deed or record plat, you can have a seven-foot setback on the side yards. However, in 1965, 1970 code, it was changed to just include record plat.
Okay, so that's fine, then you can, Mr. Cosby, if you can submit those, we can take administrative notice of that, so they don't have to be identified with an exhibit.
I have exhibits too, if he wants to pass those out.
Okay, hold on, hold on one second. But what I guess I'm trying to get at, I'm looking at page ten right now, the side, the current side yard requirement is eight feet and you have 7.5.
Just to be clear, I think it's eight and nine. I think one side has to be eight, the other side has to be nine.
Okay, and that the combined has to have seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, and you have a combined of fifteen?
Correct, that was the old law.
Okay, so that was my, that was my question. Okay, and normally I would say, that's pretty de minimis in my view, however, we have these legal requirements that have to be met. And, and it's, it's not grandfathered at this point. The side yard requirements are not grandfathered, and I presume this is due to, what section are we looking at here, Mr. Kennedy?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
On this exhibit?
15.
Copy of the exhibit.
You don't have the exhibit now.
You gave them all out, okay.
Let's apologize.
Well, okay, so anyway.
1452, Section 14. 14.0, 14.5 yards.
I'm sorry, Ms. Borden, okay?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's 14.52 yard side. It's on page thirty-seven of the sheet that you've been handed, which is.
Well, I don't have that sheet.
Thirty-seven.
No, I don't, it's not this sheet.
Oh, it's not this, 14.5.
I don't have, okay, this one we don't have, okay. Do we have it? No, the three of us don't have these.
Can I have mine?
So, 14.52, is that it, Ms. Borden?
Yes. That's correct.
Seventeen feet with.
Yeah, like side. Minimum with the beach.
So, the minimum has to be eight feet and then, but, but it has to, the combined has to be at seventeen?
Right.
Okay. So, so I would still say that was de minimis in my mind, except that you have to meet the criteria for approval of a variance that is very strict criteria, which brings me to page fifteen in the staff report, as they review the Section 27-230A, the required findings for all variances. And, and so this is 27-230A1, and that there's a remedy. If there was nothing you could do about it.
It would be different.
Yeah, it would be a little bit different. I could empathize with you a little bit more. In this particular instance, if you look at the second full paragraph on page fifteen, it appears that, that you can address this situation. There's another way for you to address the situation without the variance. And, and that's, I know you have a presentation to give, but that's something I'd like for you to highlight.
Sure.
Okay, and does that help you with your question, Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Rivera.
So, I have an exhibit.
And what do you, I need to know what your exhibits are so we can identify. How many do you have, Mr. Rivera?
I have enough for everybody up here.
I mean, but is it one exhibit or two exhibits?
Two exhibits.
Two exhibits. So, so if you, do you have a particular order?
The first is the aerial photo.
Okay, that's the big one.
Which is subject, this is part of his presentation, but I've marked it up.
Okay, so.
To provide more clarity on what we're asking for and the relationship to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, I would call that an analysis of the side yards in the subject property area. The second handout.
Okay, hold on a second now.
Okay.
This is applicant's exhibit number one, which is an, a revised aerial, oops, revised aerial depicting the side yards.
In that vicinity of the subject property.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's number one. Now, what's the next one?
Number two is a series of excerpts from a prior case that the planning board approved in 2015, actually approved later and early in 2016, but it has a 2015 number. Conservation Plan 15005. And at the top, it's highlighted in orange where the board stated in granting those seven and a half foot side yards, that the requested variance is very reasonable in keeping with the character of the existing neighborhood. So, when you read that statement on those, that decision, which if you look at the aerial photo in front of you, is just going up, it's sort of northwest, there's two houses, 5115 Emerson Street.
Okay, hold on, because I need to follow this.
I'm.
So, it's right about where Mr. Kennedy is.
Correct.
Okay.
So, those two houses, the board just heard in 2015, early 2016, and approved a layout just like this. Those are houses that Mr. Whirlline built for those clients. They both have seven and a half foot side yards on each side. All those red stars are also houses that have seven and a half foot side yards. Some are older houses, some are newer houses.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have this exhibit? Applicant's exhibit number one?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, with, that's all, that's marked up with the side yards?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I shared that with staff yesterday.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to applicant's exhibit number two, I see you pointing out which two houses they belong, this, these conditions refer to, but what, I don't know the name of this case, I need to mark that down.
That was called CSP, CP-15005. That was Emerson Street Conservation Plan.
It's East Hyattsville Lots 16 and 17.
Oh, that's right, you're right. That's Lot 16, 17. So, that's the prior approved CP in 2015 with the exact variance that we're requesting today on the same street.
And did they have an, I don't, I can't, you know, we have to take, while previous actions set some semblance of a precedent, there may be different circumstances, and I don't have all the circumstances of that case in front of me now. What I would ask is, does anyone know if that, if those particular houses had the opportunity to shorten the, to increase the side yard width by lengthening it as well, without decreasing the square footage?
Yes, they did, they did have the opportunity. I'd also like to note for the record that Lots 16 and 17 came in under the same CP. Lot 17 actually was built in nineteen, I believe nineteen thirty-eight with the same setbacks that, with the same provision under, with the seven feet. And so, because of that, in, I believe in the eighties, the house burnt down in nineteen ninety-three, the city actually razed the house. And so, because of that, Lot 17 was trying to put it in the similar footprint to that.
Square, yeah.
Yeah, so Lot 17.
So, they were extenuating circumstances.
Yes, associated with that lot.
That's seventeen, okay. But not sixteen?
Lot sixteen, because it came in with it, so it's kind of.
Okay, okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Rivera?
Thank you for that clarification. So, our point is this, the board in that case, even though there are certain circumstances applicable to that case and not this, the board did make a finding there that you can make a finding that the variance is reasonable in keeping with the character of the existing neighborhood. So, when we saw that, we created this exhibit that said what's in the neighborhood. There's seven stars in a row, the yellow one is where the subject property is. So, on page fifteen that you pointed out, Madam Chair, the staff points out that there may be a detrimental impact to the neighbors, but the neighbors have the same variance. The neighbors have the same side yard. So, it'd be hard for me to say factually that we're causing a detriment to people that have the same side yard, and they're seven in a row. Also, there are numerous houses situated like that with similar side yard in those three blocks, and we stopped counting because there's just many and many of them. Staff will tell you that because the old zoning regulations had fifty-foot wide lots, which these all are, so therefore they had the old variances or the old side yard requirement. But we're trying to keep in care to the neighborhood. Mr. Whirlline builds in Mount Rainier, Riverdale, Hyattsville, everywhere. We meet with the community, we try to design a house that looks like the old, but on inside it's all new, energy efficient and all that. So, it's providing quality infill housing stock where there are infill lots, which is also one of the benefits of the general plan, everything the county says about the established communities. It's a good house, it's keeping with the neighborhood, we're trying to fit in with the neighborhood, and the neighborhood looks like us. When you drive down the street, you won't be able to tell any difference, except that the side yards will all be the same, certain architecture's different, but in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, that's what we're doing. Terms of case law in Maryland, there are some cases, and this is an area variance versus a use variance. So, as you all know up there, you don't have to be a lawyer to say this, but the use variances are, have a higher standard to meet, it's more stringent. We have the practical difficulty standard for an area variance, which is less stringent. So, the courts have found in certain cases that if you're not increasing the density, you're not increasing anything, you're not creating any harm, then they consider that a practical difficulty to not be granted the variance. It is uncontested that we could go to the rear of the lot, create a bigger box, if you will, but we'd have to recreate new architecture, we'd have to create new architecture, and we have plans on file at DEPI. What that means is all Jonathan's product is on file to county. We get a permit after site plan, we just pick the models and we go write the permit. So, we would have to go through a process to create a new footprint for this one lot, go back through all that. So, that is part of our practical difficulty. It's not impossible, it's a question of time and money, as everything is, but that is the practical difficulty problem that we think we meet. And then, and in context with the neighborhood, what's already out there, we think it's reasonable to grant the variance, especially when all seven in a row. But at the end of the day, if the board grants the application without that variance, we could continue to do that, no problem, but we wanted to ask your support of that one variance today.
Okay, so you were reading from the court, was, were you, was that the Court of Appeals you were reading from? What case was that?
Yes, it was, where'd my paper go? Cromell versus Ward, 1995, and, I'm sorry, Dale versus Baltimore County, and I can't read my own writing, Board of Zoning Appeals, number 804, September term, 2016. And I have the cases here I could share with legal counsel.
Yeah, can you, can you share them with a legal counsel for a moment? And Ms. Borden, do you have them at your fingertips right now or no?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, so, well, why don't we, while you're doing that, let's take, because mother nature.
Can I just ask a question about the practical difficulty?
Okay, hold on one second. We're gonna, Commissioner Dorn is gonna ask this question while counsel's looking up the cases, and we're gonna take a five to 10 minute break. Okay, so ask your question.
So, when I was reading through the case, I did not expect to get the argument that you had had about the practical difficulty related to how you construct a house, is because, like the chairwoman had said, you're bringing this upon yourself and existing, like you can still build a house, you just build it deeper with a bigger box, as you said. But to meet the criteria of the practical difficulty, there is, it seems, some regulatory cost of having to develop out a new site plan, different things like that. Do you not have then any, any house architectural plan that would fit within these boundaries of, that we've talked about today?
No, we don't. And furthermore, we had to do our stormwater management concept plans, and that's in the backup with DEPI, Public Works. We fully engineered the site thinking we could be able to go forward, so that was our risk. So, there is a great deal of cost other than architecture, go back to DEPI, revise all the underlying engineering approvals. But you are right, I mean, we could design a different mousetrap.
So, what, in terms of difficulties themselves, specifically, what would it be? Would it be time? Would it be money? Like, what kind of difficulty would be imposed upon you if the variance were applied?
Yes, if the variance isn't granted, then the board could still approve the plan because the board and the staff already recommended approval without it, because they know we can pursue that solution. So, prior certification of this conservation plan, we would have to go get all that done, come back and show you the different box, if you will, that shows how we don't need the side yard setback. Then, once that's approved, then we go to DEPI and say, and all the other folks in engineering, now I have to do this, so we have to change all our underlying plans. And then, that process takes a while. Then, we file for a building permit, then we get one. So, that could take some time, two to three months easy.
Okay, we're gonna take our five to 10 minute break real quick. Counsel's gonna look up the cases. I need to, I accepted your applicant's exhibit number one into the record, I marked applicant's exhibit number two. I marked applicant exhibit number two, but did not accept it into the record. It is hereby so accepted into the record. We have additional letters that were...
Oh, I forgot to mention those. We had letters of support from lot 17 or 16 down the street.
We got them in time, I think, so we have, Paul, Georgia, and Elizabeth Merrill Snyder. So they're already in the record, okay. Board's gonna take a five to 10-minute break, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Prince George's Planning Board is back in session. Okay, Mr. Kennedy? Uh-oh.
Madam Chair, I'd like to direct the planning board to page 25 of the backup. There... There was a recommended condition from the historic preservation section that should have been carried forward, and staff has talked to the applicant, and they are in agreement for it being...
I'm sorry, it's 25 of 25?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
It's the historic preservation section, and staff has talked to the applicant. This condition should have been carried forward, and staff would like to add it to the record, to staff report. At the bottom under recommendations.
Okay. Ms. Borden, can you address, is that the, can you address the issue of the Court of Appeals comments regarding hardship?
Certainly. Deborah Borden, Principal Counsel. So, Mr. Rivera is correct, the applicable standard for this variance is going to be practical difficulties, because it is an area variance, it's not a use variance. Except his, his proposed findings really wouldn't address the practical difficulty standard. That's the problem that I think that staff had with recommending approval of this variance.
But what about what he's saying now on the record?
Well, the cases that he has provided, I'll just go through them. Dahl versus County Board of, I'm sorry, Board of Appeals. The holding does not support what Mr. Rivera is talking about. The case specifically says, the board predicated its granting of the variance on the basis that they were, quote, "reasonable and essential to prevent practical difficulty and hardship in developing the property." However, the court actually found that this was insufficient for practical difficulty, because they found, for this reason, they, they talk about it first. However, there's nothing in the record which would indicate the exact type of structure, et cetera, et cetera. The evidence as such would lead to a reasonable man to, to the belief that the granting of these variances may well affect the aesthetic ambiance of the residential zone properties. For this reason, we are of the opinion that the granting of the variance would be in disharmony with the spirit and the intent of the regulations. So that's not a particularly helpful holding for Mr. Rivera's position. The next case he cited, Friends of Ridge versus BG&E, is a case where they did find, the, the court did find practical difficulties, but this is how they found it. It, it was a case for Baltimore Gas and Electric getting a variance, and it said the board would be asking BG&E to deviate from the aforementioned nationally-recognized building and electrical codes, as well as sound engineering practices on consolidating all substation equipment. So they had a real practical difficulty there, and the court found that that was, that was fine, and that that meant the standard for a variance. So what I'm suggesting is that the cases are not particularly helpful to Mr. Rivera, and the issue here is that Mr. Rivera says that because the variances are reasonable and in keeping with the neighborhood, that that should be sufficient, that is not sufficient.
That's not the standard.
Yes.
Okay, let me stop you for a second.
Okay.
Mr. Rivera, can you come back? Mr. Rivera, for me, the difference between 7.5 feet and eight feet is not a heck of a lot. I know what it looks like, okay. If talking six inches, of course, the combined difference would be two feet, between 15 and 17 feet would be two feet. It's still not a whole lot. I'm inclined to want to help you, I need the way to get there in terms of, so make your argument for the variance, for the practical difficulties. Give us your very best shot for practical difficulties.
Well, Norman Rivera for the record. The practical difficulties, what I had said earlier in terms of the engineering revisions, the cost and the time, we have a contract with a buyer, we thought we would be somewhere, and now we're not going to be. There is going to be an architectural review, revisions, file with DPI, all that is time and money. That is our practical difficulty. The BGD case is a huge power substation, so obviously they had a different set of facts, and so did the Dahl case, where that was a use not compatible with a residential use. I cited those cases just to get the standard clear as to practical difficulty versus undue hardship. And in those cases, there are some other fact patterns that said, as Deborah Borden said, you don't want to disturb the residential ambiance. I think our exhibits show that the ambiance is going to be just like it is today, because it'll be the same setback. But in sum, we're, we can go forward without the variance, because we could go through all that, but in the interest of time and effort, we'd ask for the variance.
Yes, you can do that, but my issue is, I, I, you know, to me, this is de minimis. But I need a legal way to get you there. And I hear you saying citing practical difficulties, but you're citing the practical difficulties that it, it would take for you to correct something that you knew was a problem in, in the beginning. So I'm trying to see what else you have in terms of practical difficulties. Now, you could, I could pass this case, because I have another one waiting.
I don't want to wait for that.
I am sure you don't. But, but it might be worth it for you to wait for.
Yeah, might be to your advantage.
I really can't think of anything else, and I have already, Madam Chair. I just think you have to decide whether yourselves, based on the facts, looking at the neighborhood and what we're doing. But we'll take the approval without the variance, or we take the approval with the variance, plus the additional historic preservation condition.
Okay, Mr. Rivera, I'm trying to offer you an opportunity, but, okay. Ms. Borden, I had cut you off, was there anything else you cared to add?
No, not unless you have any questions.
Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak on this matter? Does, does the board have any other questions of you, because you still can finish if there's anything else you want to add. Does the board have any other questions of anyone?
Do we know what the expense would be associated with changing the plans? And whether or not that would have any impact on the contract purchaser?
Thank you, let me ask. We would estimate it'd be between $15,000 to $18,000 in engineering changes, and then the time loss going back to DPI, so it's unknown how long that will take. Because we were going to use the same architecture on the two houses, the other house down the street.
Ms. Borden, have any other questions? And you're sure you don't want to take, you don't want me to pass the case for a little bit?
Okay, we'll take your advice and try to think of something, thank you very much.
That wasn't my advice, try to think of something, that's...
Not your advice, I will read the tea leaves.
My advice is to pass the case and consult with your client.
We'll pass the case, you can't give me any advice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna pass this case temporarily, we're gonna go to item seven. It's okay, I know, I tried, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Amber Turnquist with the subdivision and zoning section. Item number seven before you is a preliminary plan of subdivision for Woodmore Commons. The preliminary plan proposes nine parcels for 88,000 square feet of commercial and office development, and 284 multifamily dwelling units. The site is located in central area of Prince George's County, within Planning Area 73 and Council District 5. More specifically, the site is located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Maryland 202, Landover Road, and St. Joseph's Drive. The subject site is zoned MXT and is comprised of 17.92 acres, and consists of existing, two existing parcels located on the north side of Maryland 202, and both sides of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard, and on the east side of St. Joseph's Drive. Part of parcel one is located north of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard. The properties north of this parcel and beyond St. Joseph's Drive are zoned MXT, and are developed with commercial and office uses respectively. Parcel two is located south of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard. The property beyond St. Joseph's Drive, to the west, is zoned RR, and is developed with a church. To the east of both parcels is vacant land zoned MXT. The aerial photograph shows the subject site is currently vacant. The majority of the site slopes gently towards the southeast, with the exception of an existing stormwater management facility located along the frontage of St. Joseph's Drive, and an area of rising steep slopes culminating in a plateau in the northeast corner of the site. The master plan right-of-way map shows Maryland 202, a master planned expressway to the south, St. Joseph's Drive, a master plan collector to the west, and Ruby Lockhart Boulevard, a master plan industrial roadway which bisects the site. A master plan industrial roadway is shown to the west, the location of which was realigned further west and no longer abuts the site. Adequate transportation facilities will exist to serve the site. The subdivision shows nine parcels. Parcels three through 10 propose commercial and office development, and parcel 11 proposes residential development. The proposed parcels are outlined in red, roadways in blue, and proposed easements in yellow. Access to the development pod north of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard is proposed via Ruby Lockhart Boulevard and via St. Joseph's Drive. The development pod south of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard has frontage on 202 in the, to the south, and St. Joseph's Drive to the west, to which access is to be denied. Access and circulation within the site is proposed via easements pursuant to Section 24128B9 of the subdivision regulations, which limits the number of vehicular access points in lieu of direct vehicular access to a lot fronting a public street due to a potentially hazardous or dangerous traffic situation. Access is proposed solely via Ruby Lockhart Boulevard. The cross-section for access easement A is an appropriate entry into the drive, into the south development pod as it incorporates vehicular and pedestrian access and green space. Staff recommends that all cross-sections include at least one five-foot wide sidewalk and green space abutting the drive aisles, and that all easements must be inclusive of vehicular and pedestrian circulation. The cross-section for access easement G is appropriate for the north development pod. Staff recommends revisions to cross-sections C through F to maintain vehicular and pedestrian circulation and green space. The TCP depicts the proposed site layout with streets in blue, the proposed parcels outlined in red. No PMA impacts are proposed. Staff proposes that staff, that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision 4-18024, TCP 1-019-03-03, for nine parcels, subject to the 15 conditions contained in the staff report. The applicant has proposed revisions to findings and conditions which staff has reviewed and is in agreement. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Turnquist, are there questions? Okay, we just, we do have some, one or two, one additional letter that was submitted from September the 21st, from former council member Sam Dean. And he raises a question that I'd like for our legal counsel, Ms. Borden, to address right at the outset regarding the Revenue Authority and, and Barkhill Ventures. And so if you could address this, this issue, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deborah Borden, Principal Counsel. Yes, we received an email from Mr. Sam Dean on September 21 regarding this case. He had several questions in his email, I will just go through them. He asks, can a developer go through the zoning process for property it does not own? The answer is yes. We often have cases that are led by applicants who are contract purchasers. What we require is owner consent. We do not require the applicant to be the owner of the property, and that is in the zoning ordinance. The next question Mr. Dean raised was that the Revenue Authority acquired the land, that is the subject of this preliminary plan. He says in violation of case number A-9956-C. He is concerned specifically about condition 10 of that zoning case, which I do have here in my hand, the resolution for the A-9956-C. Mr. Dean is quoting the original condition that was approved back in, I want to say, the early 2000s. But he does not notice that the condition has been since amended by resolution by the district council. As of February 26, 2018, the condition now reads, "Prior to acceptance of a detailed site plan for development of the 20-acre parcel, the applicant shall provide written confirmation that it has held a community meeting with stakeholders, which shall include an invitation to and at least representatives from St. Joseph's Parish and the Lake Arbor, Fox Lake, Largo, and Kettering Civic Associations." At this point, we are at preliminary plan, we are not at DSP, so this condition has not yet been triggered. So Mr. Dean's allegation that the, somehow this affects the approval of the preliminary plan is, is not supported by the plain meaning of the words in the revised or amended zoning condition. The other allegation in the email is that the Revenue Authority was not allowed to purchase the property until they had this meeting. That is not also, also not supported by the actual wording of the conditions in the zoning case. The zoning case doesn't mention at all any... The zoning case doesn't mention at all anything about limiting the ability of the Revenue Authority to acquire the land for any particular meeting or, or discussion with community meetings or, or I'm sorry, community civic associations. And I think that covers the issues raised by Mr. Dean. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry. The last part of the letter, the last paragraph, that the, I'll have the Revenue Authority acquire the property for its own use without notifying the Advisory Planning Committee, that's not applicable. How do, how do we handle that?
The condition of the zoning does not say anything about the Revenue Authority needing to hold a particular meeting before acquiring property. What it says is prior to the acceptance of a detailed site plan. That's what it says. And then it says, it goes on to say, the applicant shall provide written confirmation that it's held a meeting. So, there is nothing in the proposed, in the conditions of the A dash case that indicate that the Revenue Authority was supposed to hold a meeting prior to acquiring the land.
Well, what about, go, the paragraph above that, Advisory Planning Committee to decide on the disposition of the 20 acres. Does that, does that have any implications for what we're doing today, looking at today?
Again, no, it doesn't because the trigger for that is prior to acceptance of the detailed site plan. So, today we are focused on the preliminary plan of subdivision. At the time we get a detailed site plan, we will check and make sure that we get confirmation that that meeting with the community groups listed has actually been held.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Gibbs?
Good afternoon, Chair Hewlett and members of the planning board. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo. And I am here today pleased to be representing Bulk Hill Ventures LLC, the contract purchaser of.
Can you raise the microphone a little bit?
Is that better? The contract purchaser of parcels one and two, which form the subject matter of this preliminary subdivision plan application. Like to introduce you to Mr. Chris Duffy. Mr. Duffy is a principal in Bulk Hill Ventures. And the, the ownership entities of Bulk, Bulk Hill Ventures are the same principles of Petrie Richardson Ventures, the master developer of all of the retail at Woodmore Town Center. So, they're seeking to develop parcels one and two as well. And you may recall that we were just here on May 30th on this case on a revision to the conceptual site plan. I think a little bit of history may be helpful to some of the questions.
A little bit of history would be great, but fairly succinctly, though.
Well.
Okay, well, that's okay because we can continue.
If you have questions, they need to be answered. If you don't, you know, I'll be happy to.
I understand, Mr. Gibbs, but I'm just saying that a little history. And listen, let's hear me. I'm just saying, you have the opportunity to present the history, but after a certain point, we're going to be breaking for lunch and we'll come back. So, that's all I'm saying.
Right, I understand. We may, we may suffer that fate, I understand.
Yes, okay.
There are a lot of people.
Those aren't the words I used, the suffering thing.
Yes.
But, okay.
But, but in any event, when this property was originally rezoned, the applicant was Rocky Gorge Communities. They were a residential developer. But to zone MXT, you needed a mix of uses. And hence, parcels one and two were to be the commercial entity to satisfy the MXT zone requirement for two or more of the three categories. Rocky Gorge never had any intention to develop parcels one and two themselves because they were not commercial developers, but rather residential builders. The MXT zone was approved. Rocky Gorge ended up selling the project to D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton built all 393 residential units that were approved as part of the project. The only thing left was the two non-residential pieces. Now, there was a preliminary subdivision plan in 2004, or excuse me, 2003, 4-03014, and then that covered the entire project. And then there was a detailed site plan, DSP 04067, which also covered the entirety of the project. There were conditions attached to the rezoning. Condition 10 originally did say there will be an advisory planning committee, committee consisting of the applicant, meaning Rocky Gorge, and a number of named civic associations to provide advice to either the Revenue Authority or some other charitable entity concerning use of these two parcels. In the preliminary subdivision plan, the county executive filed a letter saying, these parcels have been sitting. I would like to have them developed to provide economic development for the county. I request that they be deeded to the Revenue Authority. The actual advisory planning committee was established and there is a finding in DSP 04067 confirming that the advisory planning committee had been established and had met as required by condition 10. The land area was not deeded until the, to the Revenue Authority until 2012, even though the request was made in 2004. Nothing happened with it under the Revenue Authority ownership. They filed an RFP. My client responded, was selected, and negotiated a contract to buy the two parcels. We then looked at the conditions and felt that we needed clarity on condition five and that condition 10 had become obsolete. So, we filed a request to amend those two conditions. We went through the hearing process. The district, the hearing examiner recommended approval. We recommended that condition 10 be amended to say, since the advisory planning committee had been established, had met, but no longer had a function, we recommended that it be modified so that we would have a meeting with the civic associations prior to filing the first detailed site plan. In, in February of 2018, the district council approved that modification to the condition. So, as your counsel has said, the, the concerns raised by, by former councilman Dean, who I have the utmost respect for, really are inapplicable and just not correct under the current state of both the law and the conditions. So, condition five is important in this case because it established a trip cap for the overall development of the Bulk Hill project. It allowed 1,013 AM peak hour trips, 1,058 PM peak hour trips for the entirety of the development, meaning the 393 residential units and the approximate 350,000 square feet of development that was approved for parcels one and two. We came in and amended that condition to make sure it was clear that any use permitted in the MXT zone could be developed on these two properties as long as the trip cap was not exceeded. The council approved that revision to condition five as well in 2018. We then came in and did the conceptual site plan revision, which you, you approved in May of this year. We had a hearing before the council on that this past Tuesday. They took it under advisement. So, we're here now on the preliminary subdivision plan. I don't have a great deal to say. We're proposing a number of lots. We, we can't come out onto St. Joseph's Drive between 202 and Ruby Lockhart Boulevard. It's not safe. So, we're using private easements under 24-128B1. The, we've worked, I think, hard with your staff. We appreciate their working with us. We had proposed some revisions to the conditions and I'd like to, there, there are going to be two sets of revisions because the revisions that we proposed, staff wanted to further revise. And so, the, the first set of revisions, I'll go through with you. You're going to need to keep both in your hand. The first set are mine that, where the changes are in red and the second set are those from the staff.
Hold on a second. Oh, hold on. Do we have the second set?
Right here. They're coming now. Right now.
Mr. Cosby? This is an extra.
And, and staff has reviewed both, all, both copies of the revisions.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
No, okay, no, hold on a second so I can make sure I'm keeping straight with you. Okay. So, the first applicant's exhibit number one are your proposed revisions to the conditions.
Correct.
And you'll accept it into the record as identified. Now, the next agenda item seven, what is this one?
These are further, staff reviewed. Staff reviewed our revisions and suggested further revisions to our revisions. So, if I go through.
Okay, so this is staff exhibit.
Well, it's, we're taking it as our exhibit, but they were suggestions from the staff.
Okay, okay. So, applicant's exhibit number two would be the revisions to the proposed revisions.
Correct.
Okay, yes, revisions to the revisions. Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, now.
Going, going through. So, condition 1B1, we wanted to strike the words consistent with cross-section G. It's sort of a technical reason for that. We went through it with staff in a meeting day before yesterday. I think they're in agreement.
Ms. Charkers?
That is correct.
Then we wanted to add condition 1C because there is a second conceptual stormwater management plan. Parcel one, which is on the north side of Ruby Lockhart, is going to be divided into two lots. One of those lots is going to be developed with multifamily residential. The developer for that project has filed its own stormwater management plan. And so, they had simply asked us to have recognition of the existence of that plan. So, that is condition 1C. I think staff agrees.
Correct.
Moving on to condition four. 4B, we had requested that we clarify that the sidewalks would be a minimum of five feet in width along one side of all internal private drives. And staff is in agreement with that.
Staff is in agreement.
4C, we, we had, we think that, that the five-foot wide sidewalk along both sides of Ruby Lockhart may not be in play because of changes that DEPI wants us to make to striping within the right-of-way of Ruby Lockhart Boulevard, the new section. And so, just to take care of that contingency, because DEPI had actually directed that in a memo back in April, but their request for us to re-stripe, which takes up, you know, some of the paving that, that might have been available for sidewalks, we, we just wanted to change that to say unless modified by. Now, here's where the first staff.
I got a question, a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry. So, unless modified, what, what, I mean, I know what modified means, but is there going to be some standard as to the sidewalk?
No, they may not ask for it on both sides is what, is what it is. We, we, when we went to DEPI, they, they wanted us to do basically some further analysis of, of the construction of the lanes, not further right-of-way, but further construction. They wanted an extra right-turn lane on Ruby Lockhart when you approached St. Joseph's. And so, for us to do that, that may take some of the right-of-way where the sidewalk was going to be. We don't know for sure. That's why we said unless modified. And Mr. Schaefer had, had asked to have the words added, unless modified with written documentation from DEPI. We agree with that. So, so that change becomes the, the change in exhibit two.
Right.
Okay. Exhibit five, or excuse me, condition five. You know, at our meeting day before yesterday, I thought I understood what we wanted to do with the trip cap. I, I guess I didn't understand it well enough. And so, basically, the trip cap is 1,013 AM, 1,058 PM trips. Certain number of those trips are already eaten up with the 393 residential units, but there is a surplus of trips left. And it is actually 721 AM trips and 658 PM trips, which would be the trip cap for this subdivision. So, we would suggest that the modification in exhibit two become the correct numbers.
I need to stop you because I identified applicant's exhibit two, but I'm not sure I accept it into the record. So, it is accepted into the record as identified.
So, basically, what that does is just says what, the trips that are left, this project can use and.
So, modifies five.
Yes, sir. Then you go to 11.
I'm sorry, may I please interrupt for five? I, typographical error in not in underlining which shall further be, which shall be further limited in accordance with the overall Bulk Hill development approved with 4-090, 03094.
I'm sorry, Ms. Turnquist. Which document?
That was on applicant's exhibit two.
True.
Okay. One of the changes was not underlined to indicate that it was an insertion.
Does it, where does it stop? Approved by?
At the end of that sentence, which shall be further limited in accordance with the overall Bulk Hill development approved with 4-03094.
Oh, okay.
That just is a recognition, I guess, that Ms. Turnquist wanted in there and Mr. Masag relative to the fact that the 393 ate up some of that trip cap.
Okay.
And then on 11, this is just, again, a, a technical request from the residential developer relative to recreational facilities that will be required. And I think staff agrees with that revision as well.
Ms. Turnquist?
Staff is in agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
And then finding four?
Yeah, now, if you turn over to finding four, this was a request for revision to the finding by the, by the residential developer of the project. And staff had some concerns about it, so we, we're going to withdraw that request. And we would simply like a finding in number four under stormwater management that simply recognizes the fact that the residential component has another stormwater management plan that is under review by DEPI. And, and I think staff agrees with that change and.
Staff is in agreement.
So, it's not the changes indicated in exhibit number one, it's a different, as stated?
Yes, as stated here. Just a recognition in the finding that there's a second stormwater management plan that's under review.
So, just delete this whole thing?
Yeah. Yeah, delete that entire thing.
Okay.
The, and so, the, and then the, the number seven, the transportation chart, that, if you look down there at the bottom, it said proposed trip cap. That, that's really not the cap, that's just the trips that are proposed to be developed at this time, but our cap is higher.
Okay. And 547, okay.
But our cap would be higher. Because, look, we, we have an office building component that's going to be part of this project and we're trying to get it to be bigger. And, and so, if we can get it bigger and we have room under the cap, then that's a good thing. And, and that was the reason for the, for the revision. And then finally, under prior approvals, it's just a recognition there of the change that occurred to condition five as part of the zoning map amendment revision in 2018 by the district council. And I think staff is in agreement with those as well.
Staff is in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that having been said, I would simply note that we, you know, we comply with transportation adequacy findings and with all other design requirements as modified by staff's very, very relevant comments. So, thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
I just need clarification on applicant exhibit two with respect to the findings?
We didn't.
It's, it's no finding, you mean one.
One, one has findings changes. Yes, sir.
So, is, as written, now that's going to be the finding? That's what I'm, I'm.
Yes, correct, in red, yeah.
In red, okay.
Okay?
Well, no, 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 no. No, you struck everything in applicant exhibit number one. You just, we just need to recognize.
No, 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 number four, we did strike. Number four.
Applicant exhibit number one.
Correct.
Finding four.
Correct. The finding four, we struck.
Recognition of the second stormwater management.
That is correct.
Right.
But for the other proposed changes to the findings, they remain as they're shown in red on applicant's exhibit one.
Okay. Go back to the original. That's what I want to be clear.
All right, all right. Finding four, that was proposed, we are.
We're drawing.
We are abandoning that. That's correct.
That's what we want.
There were two other finding changes that were proposed on applicant's exhibit one. One is a change to the chart, the trip chart. And the second is a change to a finding that discussed prior zoning approvals. And in particular, it was condition five. And we simp, the, the staff in their report with condition. And we simply, the staff in their report with condition five cited old condition five, not new condition five as amended in 2018, and we simply wanted that clarified, okay?
Yep. Got it.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, let me say this. We have a number of people who have signed up. We want to hear, excuse me, we want to hear from you. If you, if, when I call your name, you choose to speak, please come to the podium. If you just want to say whether you're an opponent or proponent, whether you're in favor of or against, just let us, you can let us know from the seat if you so choose. Or if you want to associate yourself with, and after we get to the second or third speaker, if you want to associate yourself with one of the previous speakers, you have the opportunity to do that as well. One of the things I would mention is that we, that we have to do, we are charged with making decisions. And in the case of land use decisions, and in the case of a preliminary plan of subdivision, we make the final decision. But our decisions have to comply with the various laws. They have to comply with the, with the state law, they have to comply with the ordinances as enacted by the county council. We have to comport with the law of the land as established by the Court of Appeals in the state of Maryland and the U.S. Supreme Court. And the reason I raise that is because I have a letter here from, that I want to enter into the record. It is from the Prince George's County Educators Association. It is dated September 24, 2019. I don't know if you have a copy. We'll get you a copy, Mr. Gibbs. And we're going to mark this and accept it into the record as opponent's exhibit number one. But it does talk about being opposed by virtue of the number of school children that this, these 284 multifamily units will contribute to the already overcrowded school system. And the reason I want to say that is, is that the county council has enacted a law. It was CB 31, 2003, which provides that school, for a school facility surcharge with an annual adjustment for inflation. So we cannot approve or deny an application based on its impact on the school system. We are prohibited by law from doing that because of the law enacted by the county council allowing for the school surcharge. And it's set forth on page 14 of the technical staff report. If anyone here wishes the staff report, hopefully you have it. If you don't have it, we can get you one. So I just wanted to point that out because that is not something that we can, we can base our decision on. And as long, along with a lot of other things, transportation, we always have to make sure that our applications comply with the laws as set forth by the courts and, well, set forth legislatively and as interpreted by the courts. So I'm going to call people in order. I think I'm going to start with the Senator Joanne C. Benson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Senator, can you adjust the, make sure your, the mic is close to you, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all, Madam Chair, members of this wonderful commission. I want to thank you all for the opportunity for me to stand here. And I want you to know that I'm representing Rocky, I'm representing Bulk Hill, St. Joseph's Parish, Lake Arbor, Kettering Civic Association, Foxley Homeowners Association. And these are the groups, these are the associations and homeowners that make up the advisory planning committee.
Can you just state your name for the record even though I called?
I'm sorry. Good afternoon, my name is Joanne C. Benson. I am a Senator of the 24th Legislative District here in Prince George's County. And so I want to just reiterate the fact that I am representing and really speaking pretty much the concerns of these five or six homeowners and civic associations. I want to go back just a moment if I could. I want to take a whole lot of time here because time is important. A little over eight years old, eight years, a little over eight years ago, when the Woodmore Town Center was conceived and talked about, St. Joseph Catholic Parish was there on that corner. And they've been there for almost, if I'm not mistaken, they've been there for close to 50 years. And at that time, they were there for about 45 years. They were very concerned about the shopping center and what was going to happen there. They were very concerned about the infrastructure. The developer and builders went to St. Joseph's and told them that they had to put up close to $14,000 to pay for the infrastructure, even though they had been there and basically were concerned about the fact that it would create problems for them. They were pretty much promised that there would be, because if you think about St. Joseph's Parish, there's only one way in and one way out. And so if you go around the corner, ahead toward the Woodmore Shopping Center, there's an apron there. And they were promised that there was going to be a road or a way for them to get out behind St. Joseph's Parish. That was over eight years ago, and that promise has not been kept. They've made a lot of promises to St. Joseph's, and nothing, ladies and gentlemen, has happened. I went to a funeral for my wonderful friend Barbara Martin last week. And for the funeral car to get out on the street, it took us about 35 to 40 minutes for that, for that funeral car and the entourage to get out of there. Because there was no police there to stop the cars. Because every Sunday and every time they have an occasion that's going to involve a lot of people, they have to hire a police. That's totally unacceptable. Because St. Joseph's didn't ask for this problem in the first place. So St. Joseph's is under siege as a result of the traffic. They've had several accidents there, some were very serious, as a matter of fact, where people were trying to get out of St. Joseph's to go home. And so when I talked with the bishop, when I talked to the parishioners, or when I talked with the priests, they are wringing their hands as a result of this problem with the traffic. It is very, very serious. And so I'm here this afternoon to talk to you all about the fact that it is a problem. The infrastructure right now going into Woodmore is a problem. And it pretty much reminds me of Landover Mall. That's one of the reasons, they say, well, it's different and other things, but I beg to differ. Because if you look at the back of Landover Mall, there was supposed to be an exit and an entrance from the back of the mall, and it never happened because of spitting matches that were going on between the state, the county, and the federal government. I know the history. So we are having a serious problem here with St. Joseph's and this problem of more houses and this development that's going to go on across the street. It's going to add to more of the problems that these people have to deal with. And we want to go on record in our position to it. The other thing is that, that was a, no one has talked to these people in the community. These people never came to the community to talk to them about what their plans were. And recently, over in Forestville, I don't want to go into that, but the reason why we got into trouble over there was that the people, the developers and builders totally ignored the community. It's the same principle being applied here. No one talks to the community. No one. And I want to tell you all also, there's a problem with diversity here. Because people don't give back to the community. They don't give back to the children, they don't give back to the community. It's a problem. But I want to get back to St. Joseph's. If you are a member of that church, you will have the same concerns that many of these people are voicing to me. They're here today. These homeowners associations are here today. Because we are very concerned about the unprofessional behavior of many of our builders and developers. They completely and totally ignore the community. This problem with St. Joseph's is critical. Getting in and out of the parish is a problem. And so I'm here today asking you all, and I do want you to know that I somewhat agree with Mr. Dean's correspondence. He's been around a long time. So we do agree with that. We are prepared to do whatever it takes to impress upon the builders and developers that they cannot do business as usual. We cannot have it. And they cannot come here and build houses and run off into the sunset and forget about the community. We've had a difficult time trying to deal with the home, the builders who have built the houses in Woodmore, I mean, is it Woodmore? The new development, whatever that is up there, where the grocery store is. Is that Woodmore? That is Woodmore.
Woodmore Town Center. You mean where the Weymans is?
Woodmore Town Center. We've had some hard times over there with that whole development, Madam Chair. And I hope you all feel our passion. We are very upset over the fact that the community, those civic and homeowners associations are being totally ignored. And what you understand is not about politics, it's about what's right. And the people coming in and out of St. Joseph's are very concerned. And we want you all to put a stop to this until we know exactly what's going to happen with this development. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
You have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Are there any questions? I'm going to reserve my comments.
In and out.
Thank you.
One way in, one way out, it's not right. It is really not right, you all. And you have to think about those little people who come there, and they.
Some of us are not so little.
It's a big, it's a big problem. It's a big problem. It was a big problem for me, watching those people trying to get out of that church, of that parish at Barbara's funeral. It was shameful, really. And they said, the priest said to me, Senator Benson, we have to endure this every day when we have an activity here. And on Sundays, it is a nightmare. And if you put more apartments, more houses across the street, it's going to add to the problem, ladies and gentlemen. We're not, we're not very pleased at all.
Senator Benson, Senator Benson, though, let me say this. Thank you very much for your testimony. We make our decisions, we have to make our decisions in compliance with the law. We will, we will, there's a staff report here, and they will address the transportation conditions. You raised some good points that we will have the applicant respond to, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Please be sure, we're not willing to take it sitting down.
Okay.
Senator Benson? Senator Benson?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that because I go to that parish sometime. I went to a funeral there for Judge Missouri. And so I know the problem that it was to get in and out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was his church. It's also Sheriff, Sheriff Melvin High's church and Congressman Anthony Brown's church. As a matter of fact, Anthony Brown made these developers and builders give St. Joseph's back, that $13,000. We went down to Annapolis and said, give it back. And they had to give it back to St. Joseph's. So there's a long history here. And I'm not, you know, I'm not a shrinking violet, and I tell it like it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to have some, call people in order, as most people know, and as I see some of the members there, I go to that church regularly as well, I was just there on Sunday.
I was there for the funeral.
So I understand. But we still have to make our decisions in compliance with the law, and I'm not, we'll hear from some others, okay? Andrew Lor, you don't wish to speak, but you're a proponent. Xena Whitworth, if you wish to speak? Okay, come on down. Do you all have the staff report? Do you?
Will you talk to me?
I'm asking for everyone here, because you can always download the staff report prior to coming here.
Oh, yes.
It's posted, so you do have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. I am Xena Whitworth. I'm here in behalf, on behalf of the Prince George's County Educators Association. I'm here to represent Teresa Mitchell Dudley, PGCA president, and to read the letter that is.
You can't, you don't need to read the letter, we have the letter in the record. I mentioned that earlier. I don't know if you heard me.
I just felt like, all right. Also, I am a employee at Charles Herbert Flowers, the high school that directly impacts this decision of building at the Woodmore, in the Woodmore Town Center area. And as a faculty leader of Charles Herbert Flowers High School, I would like to personally implore county leadership to use the opportunity to revisit school boundaries and plan for growth that supports student success with responsibilities towards class sizes and upgrading facilities as you continue to grow Prince George's County. To keep in mind the impact that this has on the children and the parents and the residents of the area. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Whitworth. Okay. Doron Johnson?
Good afternoon. Doron Johnson.
You can move the microphone up.
Can you hear me? Got it? Yep.
A little bit higher still, okay, okay.
President of Bulk Hill Village Homeowners Association. We've been working in tandem with the Lake Arbor Civic Committee. And Mr. Sam Dean did submit the letter that you've read today. But we, I just want to still stand up here and say that our community is still in opposition of the new development. All right, thank you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Johnson? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Joshua Harris?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, and if I may take a moment of personal privilege, I'd just like to say, Commissioner Washington, I'm a big fan of yours, from your work with the CBCF, as well as with Namick, someone who started out there years ago, very involved, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joshua Harris. I'm representing Prince George's County Educators Association. I've heard you say over and over again about the minimum requirements for development in the county. And we understand those legal requirements, but we also understand that historically, not all things that have been legal have been equitable nor ethical. And so I'd like to just point towards page 14 of the proposal, where it says.
Hold on a second. Are you talking about page 14 of our technical staff report?
Of the preliminary plan of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Where it says the impact on affected public schools, where we think that these numbers are grossly inaccurate. It currently says that the middle school is at 94% capacity and that the high school is at 86% capacity, and both of those schools are actually at 100% capacity. And so what we also like to say is that our county executive is a staunch advocate of public education, and so much so that she's put 63% of our budget, overall general budget, towards education in the county. And just in March, more than 10,000 teachers took to Annapolis to march for the Maryland Blueprint for Public, Blueprint for Maryland's Future, as well as the current commission recommendations, which included in those recommendations are stipulations for smaller classroom sizes. Because we know the classroom sizes have been directly correlated to student outcomes and student success. And we know that this is a development for 284 multifamily dwellings. And these numbers on page 14 say that it's anticipated that only, there will only be 34 elementary school students, 15 middle school students, and 21 high school students that will come from these multifamily dwellings. That means that assuming that each multifamily dwelling only has one child, there will only be less than 25% of the, of the development, of the housing developments that will have a child in it, which just does not seem accurate at all. Furthermore, we have to understand that if we are to improve the outcomes for our students, we must understand the consequences of overdevelopment of our communities and the outcomes that they have directly correlated to our student success. And so on behalf of Prince George's County educators and our 10,000 members, we oppose this development until there's something done to be inclusive of the future of our students and the future of our county. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Diane Farrell?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Diane Farrell, and I'm here to oppose the actions. You've already read into action what Sam Dean has said. And as Secretary of the Civic Association, I'm standing here opposing to the new development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Excuse me? Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Excuse me?
Which association?
Oh, which association? I'm sorry. Thank you. It's Lake Arbor Civic Association.
Yes.
Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak whose name I did not call? I have some questions. So, let's see. I want Madam Planning Director or whomever, someone needs to tell me how we analyze the impact on public schools and who provide the information if the PGCA is saying that this information is not correct. So I need to know that.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I can provide that information. Deborah Board and Principal Counsel, I've worked with countywide on the school capacity analysis enough that I can tell you, we get those numbers from the school board. And we also get the pupil yield from the school board. And, right or wrong, the pupil yield, really in any county, is going to be the lowest for multifamily development. That's a standard factor that is considered in projecting pupil yield from new development. Whether that is correct or not, I can't speak to that, but that is a normal situation when you're looking to project the number of schools, I'm sorry, the number of students that a particular new development will produce. We can certainly take a look at those numbers and try to maybe compare them with other counties to see that we are still in the same ballpark. I don't know that we've done that recently. We can certainly do that at a staff level.
Okay, so I would ask that we take a look at that and reach out to the school board again for Prince George's County to ensure that, you know, just to double check and make sure that these numbers that we're getting from them are still correct. Okay, that's part one. Mr. Gibbs, when you get back up, I'd like for you to address community notice. And I know that pursuant to, I know a couple of things, and I don't know the rest of it. I know that the community, that the informational mailing was sent out to the community in October of 18, the acceptance mailing, that meaning that we had, the park and planning had accepted the application, was mailed to the community June 17, 2019, and then the sign was posted on August of 2019. When letters and notices are sent, they typically say who for the community to reach out to, should you like more information, or would you like anyone to come to your community association to speak to you. So I don't know if that happened or not. And the only way I can find out is if you can share that information with us, Mr. Gibbs. So that concluded the sign-up sheet. So, was there anyone else to speak who did not speak? Okay. Ma'am, did you...
Yes, please.
Okay.
I forgot to sign in.
You forgot to sign in? Okay, well, you can come up and then sign in. Thank you. Please identify yourself for the record.
Richland Densler, here on behalf of myself as a resident and Balk Hill Village Homeowners Association.
Okay, all right. So, wait a minute. Balk Hill Village Homeowners Association?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it's called?
Yes.
Okay. When you're speaking, we had Doron Johnson speak, is that because the homeowners' association took a position at a formal vote?
Yes, so I'm just here to support the position against.
You're speaking on behalf of yourself?
Right, because my home is directly adjacent to the development, yes.
Okay, so you're speaking on behalf of yourself. Okay. And you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, and you want the record to reflect that?
Yes.
And it will. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak whose name I did not call? Okay, sir.
Yeah.
Come on down. And then if both of you can fill out the blue forms afterwards, okay? And sir, if you can adjust the microphone to your height. Thank you.
I am Timothy McIntosh, and I oppose the development in the area. I attend the surrounding church, Woodstream Church, which is impacted by the additional buildings that will be built there. I'm concerned with regard to the church as to the part of the infrastructure as far as the roads are concerned, who's going to be paying for the roads, et cetera, because even though, I would assume that some financial burden may be on the church, and I would hope that it is not as far as paying for any roads that would be there, roads as well as stoplights. Any questions?
Not today. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you very much. First, relative to, first, relative to just the comments about roads and traffic. The Woodmore Town Center property was owned MXT back in 1988 by McCormick Properties. Ultimately, my clients purchased the land, the commercial component, and developed Woodmore Town Center. They made roughly $10 or $11 million worth of road improvements. They could have made financial payments under the 202 Road Club. They chose not to make payments because they didn't know where the money would be used. It might not be used really to benefit the roadway. So they made the actual road improvements themselves to that value. Similarly, when Balk Hill, this project, was approved, the full list of road improvements that this particular project was tasked with is set out in the staff report. But, you know, it involved building Campus Way as an arterial, building St. Joseph's as a collector, both of which have been done, making improvements by additional lanes along 202's main line and in turning movements, and providing future right-of-way dedication for ramps to be used when further future improvements are made to 202 and McCormick Drive. So, there have been millions of dollars of improvements that have been made. I mean, the county made a determination that this section of the county was really going to be downtown Prince George's County. And that's thankfully what is happening. Woodmore Town Center is the retail jewel, I think it's fair to say, of the county, and it's an immense success. And when you have success like that, people are going to visit. This project was tasked with road improvements. Those road improvements have been largely made, and we have passed the adequate transportation facilities test. We're below, we're below the trip cap that's been allocated to this project. You know, I mean, I understand how people don't...
You understand, I guess you're getting ready to say the same thing. You understand that, but we have a trip cap, and we have their, but not everyone understands that. And we see more traffic coming. I see it in my neighborhood. We all see it. And it takes us longer to get out. And we don't understand what the law is with regard to what the thresholds amount.
And I understand, I understand the frustrations. But we're dealing within, fully within the law as it applies to this project. We're not asking for anything special, and we're actually doing less in terms of development than what was allowed. So, you know, I understand the frustrations. Listen, my office, you know, we built our office building in Inglewood Business Park. I'm over in Woodmore Town Center probably three or four days a week. I understand. There's a lot, there are a lot of cars going in and out of there. I will say this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Duffy to come up here. To my knowledge, they never extracted any money from St. Joseph's. They've actually given money to St. Joseph's to help with improvements and stormwater management at the church property. And I am going to ask Mr. Duffy...
I'd like to know that, because I don't see how, there has to be a nexus before you started extracting money, extracting money.
Well, yeah. Well, these were just, and I'm going to tell you more about what we're doing for St. Joseph's.
Okay. And also, if you want Mr. Duffy to come up, but also, we'll want to hear also about the community, communication with the community.
Believe me, we're going to do that right now. First of all, all right, in September 6 of 2018, we had our first outreach meeting. There were eight civic associations present. That was when we had the property under contract, and we were commencing the consideration of amending conditions and going forward after that with our conceptual site plan. So we were working through Sigrid Samuel of Lake Arbor.
So, let me stop you for a second to make sure I'm clear. So that was September of 2018?
Correct.
That was prior to, yeah, prior to the informational mailing?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
I'm just making sure. Okay. And it was eight associations?
Eight associations.
Can you tell me what they were?
I don't have that list here, but I do have a list of our most recent meetings.
Okay.
Okay. We also had, before the conceptual site plan was considered, okay, before we filed, all right, we had a meeting with eight civic associations, again. One was in March, either late March or early April of 2019, and the second was on May 9 of 2019.
And where did you hold these meetings?
The, I think the September meeting might have been over in the Lake Arbor Building. The other meetings, if my memory serves me correctly, were in the conference room at Woodmore Town Center.
Conference room.
The conference room. We have a conference room.
Woodmore Town Center.
At Woodmore Town Center, yeah. And so, we were 100% transparent about what our plans and proposals were. We promised all those present that we would distribute copies of our plans, which we did. Ms. Samuel asked for them electronically. We did that. So everyone knew about what our plans were.
So each of those meetings consisted of eight associations?
Right.
There's a September meeting, the March meeting, and the May meeting, okay?
That's correct. And then, before the preliminary subdivision plan, and our pledge, our pledge was, you know, "We will tell you before we have our case accepted, and we will meet with you before we ever go to hearing." Okay? So on May, excuse me, on July 7, we convened a meeting again at the Woodmore Conference Room to discuss this preliminary subdivision plan.
Can you tell me how many people were at that meeting, approximately?
There probably were, probably were 25 to 30 people, maybe. And these are the organizations who were represented. St. Joseph's Parish, Fox Lake, Ardmore Springdale, Kettering Civic Association, Mr. Johnson from Balk Hill Village was there, Woodstream Church was there, West Lake, Arbor View, Woodmore South, Lake Arbor, Largo Civic Association, and Springdale. All of those associations were represented at that meeting. Again, we were 100% transparent about what our plans were, and we pledged that after we get through the preliminary subdivision plan process, and as we develop our detailed site plan, we would meet again. So it was very disappointing for me today to hear that we have ignored the community. And I know Senator Benson, and I know that she would not have made a comment like that if she had known about all these meetings. But these meetings all took place. In addition, in addition, if you will recall, when we were here on May 30, when we were here on May 30 for our conceptual site plan, the Balk Hill Village had not registered as an association to get notification of hearings, and so we pledged that we would meet with them personally. Mr. Duffy met with Mr. Johnson, and I believe some other representatives who were here. Ms. Dansel was here that day as well, and offered to have meetings. And what I've just passed out to you is copies of emails that Mr. Duffy has sent three different times to Mr. Johnson, saying, "We're ready to meet, we're ready to meet, we're ready to meet." And the response always is, "We'll let you know when we want to meet." So we have...
Hold on a second. Let me take time to...
Read it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have an email dated July 3, 2019, that shows a series of emails back and forth from Mr. Duffy to Mr. Johnson and, I don't know, Tracy Color, Tracy Colors, I guess, and Matt Miracle requesting, you know, regarding coming to participate in a meeting with Balk Hill Village. So, there were several emails. One, May 31, another one on June 17, asking again to meet with the Balk Hill. You have June 17 from Mr. Johnson saying, "Thank you for reaching out. We're still trying to develop a course of action. We'll let you know. We'll be in contact when things are finalized to schedule a meeting." Again, on July 3, you reached out about a meeting, and on July 3, again, you received a response saying that, "We'll let you know," basically. And is this applicant's exhibit number three? We'll mark this and accept it into the record as applicant's exhibit number three. So, okay.
Let me go to one other thing, please. Well, let me just finish this by saying, you know, neither I nor my client ever try to come before you without having the citizen involvement and interaction that we know is so important. And we've done the same thing on this case. And so, you know, people may not like what the proposal is, but it's not because of us not getting in touch with them and being very clear and honest with them about what our plans are. Now, St. Joseph's Church, it's a tough situation for them. We realize that, because they were here, and then all this development got approved around them, and they do have that one driveway currently. Now, we, my client has pledged, I don't know whether we have an exhibit that shows Woodmore Town Center with this property. Do you have an aerial at all?
Egress.
Right there. Okay.
Egress.
There we go. There we go. Okay. So, you can see the church right there, which Ms. Turnquist is marking on.
Where's Landover Road, right?
Landover Road is right out there, right out at the lower left, okay? And that's the Beltway interchange in the left corner.
Okay.
Okay, so, several years ago, my client, as the developer of Woodmore Town Center, said to St. Joseph's Church, "At such time as the development pod directly behind the church is developed, okay, and it's paved, we would provide access through that parcel to the church to give them a second access to Ruby Lockhart Boulevard." Okay? So they would have more than one access from their particular project. Now...
I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbs, before you go on, you're referencing across the street where the gym is?
No, no, right behind the church, behind the church. There you go. See where the red marker is going back and forth? That is a development pod of Woodmore Town Center, which is designated for multifamily, and there's a commercial pad in the front. That is going to be served by a private easement, 24128B1, and we have, my client committed several years ago, that when that site is developed, St. Joseph's will also be given an easement to come out that same egress point. Now, now...
In and out?
In and out, yes.
Okay.
Now, that's not helping St. Joseph's today, okay? We had a meeting approximately, well, we had a meeting approximately six months ago, between four and six months ago, with the church. And we said we would, they wanted some immediate assistance relative to access. And we said, "Go meet with D-PY, see what they would approve in the way of a temporary access road out to Ruby Lockhart across the Woodmore Town Center property, and we will see if we can help you." They sent us ultimately an email, and we followed up, not right away, but we followed up. We had a meeting with them about two weeks ago, and they gave us an estimate of costs to build a temporary access drive across there. The range was between, I think, $40,000 and $60,000. We looked at it, and my client... We looked at it, and my client believes that it's more closer to 40 than to 60. My client has agreed to give them $50,000 and to go with them to D-PY, to, and my client's already talked with representatives of D-PY, but to go with the church to D-PY to assist them in getting the approval for the temporary access road. We have committed that to the church and to their attorney. We are in the process of getting a document approved by Prudential Insurance, who's now the major equity owner of Woodmore Town Center, for the permanent easement across their property for the ultimate roadway when it's, when, when that parcel is developed. So that's where we are.
I'm gonna stop you for a second.
That's the commitment we made.
Because that is a beautiful thing, because I had this conversation with Mr. Masag before I go to that church regularly. I, I, I see, I see some of the parishioners right here in the audience, particularly the Newmans who celebrated their 50th anniversary there. When you come out of that church, you cannot make a left.
Right.
You have to make a right.
Mm-hmm.
Almost every family I know, when they leave Sunday services, they go to the grocery store to get their groceries for the week. I'm one of them. When you come out of that church, you cannot then go to Wegmans. So what they do, and, and I know Mr. Masag was incredulous when I said this, but they do what a number of people do. They come out of that church, they, they turn right as required, they get to the light at Landover Road and make a U-turn on Landover Road to go back to get to Wegmans. I see it over and over and over again. I'm not going to incriminate myself, but I've seen a lot of other people do it.
[laughing]
Over and over and over again, over and over and over again. And to, and it's, and it's going to be a safety issue, and it's, at some point, that would be a beautiful thing, so that people have other ingress and egresses.
So, but, but I mean, my client is sensitive to the concerns out there, and I, I think this is indicative of, of doing that. We did a similar thing-
That's wonderful.
We did a similar thing with, with Fox Lake, if I recall correctly, when they were concerned about our revisions to the conditions. And we made a monetary, a monetary contribution to them to address an issue they had with landscaping at the front of their community. So, you know, this client is not one to shirk it, its responsibility to do the right thing. And so, that's, that's, I mean, I know you can't make that a condition, and we're not asking you to, you don't enforce private agreements, but I wouldn't be standing here saying it in front of you if we hadn't committed to it.
What I would ask that you do, Mr. Gibbs, is after this case is over, sit down and talk with the, to the citizens. And, and I do have to note for the record, because usually when we have people representing other people there, it's by virtue of being an attorney, but Senator Benson can speak as representing her constituents. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Yeah.
But it would be helpful for you to sit down and talk with her, okay?
Sure, sure, no, and, look, we have the, the highest respect for Senator Benson. I mean, we've worked with her many years, including-
Who doesn't?
From the inception of Woodmore Town Center, although, Senator, it was 15 years ago, actually, but, but yes, we do, and we'll talk to them, okay?
Thank you.
The only other thing I'd say is, on the one-way in, one-way out, from Woodmore Town Center, there already is a back way out through Campus Way over to Lotzford. That's number one.
Right.
And number two, one of the requirements of the Balk Hill project was to build an extension to Ruby Lockard Boulevard. Part of that has been built all the way up to St. Joseph's today. There's a little section that's not completed yet, that will be completed soon, and that is going to provide access in and out, egress out, from Woodmore Town Center and St. Joseph's Drive all the way out to Lotzford Road. And it's almost completed.
That's great.
So there will be other points of access.
That's the way I go in, actually.
Alright, thank you very much.
That's great, thank you, thank you. Okay, does the board have any questions? First of all, before we ask for a vote, I'd like to thank everyone for coming down and sharing their concerns. We've had to sit here for a long day, we have a lot of cases, we still have a couple to get to. We do want to thank everyone. With regard to the issue of, it's hard getting in and out of churches, but I do go there on Sundays, and, you know, you have, you turn right, and, you know, but for, for big, for funerals and other occasions, it's, it's more complicated. And typically, you know, for funerals, a lot of folks will ask for police escorts and whatnot. I don't know if that's what happened before, but will typically ask for it, just to direct the traffic. And then on Sunday services, the churches that are near me, you know, they, they all hire police, they all have to hire police to help with the services. I'm near Reed Temple, they, even when that came to my neighborhood, I was a little bit panicky, but they're doing a masterful job. First Baptist of Glen Arden, they have, yeah, almost every church has to do that. So that's, that's unfortunate, but that's what you have to do for certain occasions. Okay, and does the board have any questions of anyone? I would ask that, you see, there's been numerous instances where the, where the applicant has met with the communities. I would ask one thing that, this may or may not apply to you, but I'm asking that you make sure, because we say this pretty much every week, make sure that the homeowners' association is kept up to date, so that when we give, provide the homeowners' associations and civic associations informations, that, that, when we provide that information, that it's current and up to date, that with the current president, and every time you have elections and whatnot. Okay, but again, we thank everyone for coming. Does the board have any questions of anyone? Is, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, make the motion, and I would also like to thank everyone for coming out and testifying today. I live in that area and am very familiar with, with the, the traffic situation and, and the growing, the growth that's taking place in the area. But I'm also heartened by, and I think Mr. Gibbs mentioned it, I know he mentioned it earlier, the, the way that the Woodmore Town Center is opening up in lots of different ways, in terms of Campus Way and St. Joseph's. So just bear with us as we continue to grow up and make it a beautiful downtown Prince George's. With that, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff, and the findings shall be revised as outlined in applicant exhibit number one, with the exception of finding number four. And I would ask that staff and council work on appropriate language to, to ensure that there is recognition of a second stormwater management plan as part of finding number four, and approve preliminary plan 4-18024 and TCP 1-019-03-03, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and as further modified in applicant exhibit number one, and as further additionally modified as outlined in applicant exhibit number two. Second?
We have a motion and a second, pick one, we had two seconds. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. May I take a moment of personal privilege to, I've, I've already semi-acknowledged them, but I had the pleasure of attending St. Joseph's, in addition to Sunday services, for the beautiful ceremony for a lovely couple, Daddy and Paul Newman, who are sitting here in the audience, they celebrated their 50th anniversary, and they have endured significant challenges throughout the course of their marriage, and, and I don't mean just marital, I don't mean marital challenges, but health challenges.
Health challenges.
And God has been with them every step of the way, and they have been a lovely couple for all of us to emulate, and I cannot let this moment pass without acknowledging two beautiful people who came together and have stayed together all this time. They're just a wonderful couple, so Daddy and Paul, if you could please stand.
May I add my comments?
Thank you. And happy 50th. Okay, alright, we're back to item, what was that, six?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, but please take the opportunity, thank you, okay.
Item number six?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you had anything, do we just need to hear from Mr. Rivera, Mr. Kenny, or did you have anything to add? Whichever works for you.
Uh, no, Madam, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, Mr. Rivera. I have a ruler here.
Okay.
I did have one a second ago. Oh. And I know the difference between seven and a half feet and eight feet.
Yes.
I need, but I also know the requirements for variance, and I'm trying to help, I'm trying to get to practical difficulties.
Okay.
Your counsel, your esteemed, I've known you since you, before you started law school, please, can you please explain to us again what your practical difficulties are?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Norman Rivera, representing Royaline Properties. So, in conversing with my client and his partner, we have three different costs and issues that relate to what the practical difficulty is. So there's hard costs, soft costs, and opportunity costs. The hard costs are the engineering necessary from an architectural standpoint, the site plan start standpoint, the fees you have to pay to the consultants and to D-PY and any other agency that requires any revision. If we're lucky, we'll get a three-month review for the new plans, and this conservation plan cannot be certified until that is done to show you how we, we do something. But, in this case, the cost, if we had to do all that, would be the three-month delay with D-PY. That just gets your plans approved to have a box that works, not only outside the box, but all the interior has to be redesigned, the bathrooms, the windows, et cetera. Then there's a permit issuance, once that is done, once the conservation plan is officially approved. That can take two months. The practical difficulty there, in addition to the hard costs, is that it puts you in the middle of winter, and to mobilize his building crews in the winter for one house, when we thought we'd be there this fall, is another practical difficulty. The soft costs, again, are the engineering, architectural, county permit fees, and as you know, the county charges a school surcharge fee as well as a public safety fee, and even though we're inside the Beltway with reduced fees, it's still about $17,000 total. Then there are the opportunity costs, the lost costs of this delay, we could lose a buyer, we could lose anything. They might not approve what we want, then we might have to start over. All that becomes costs and delay, and because it's one house, we, we can't spread it out over, say, an 80-unit job, where you could build the same box 80 times with variations and spread that cost around. It's one house, there's a very limited margin here, and there's only one buyer for that one house. So there's three buckets, the hard costs, the soft costs, the opportunity cost of a lost time, and, and potential buyers, as well as the practical difficulty in construction during the winter, given the lateness of the year. So I would ask the board to consider that practical difficulty and appreciate your support.
I have one more question, is there anything also, if you were trying to make up the difference via the depth of the home, is there any kind of issue from, like, behind the home that makes it problematic as well?
Well, eventually you get to a rear yard setback issue with the loss to the rear. So, where the house is located now, I don't, unless it was a substantial addition, I don't think we're going to hit the, what is it, 20-foot yard, rear yard requirement.
Okay.
So the answer is no?
Correct.
Okay. Does the board, is that it for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the board have any other questions? So what was holding this back was, was the variance to Section 27-3230A1, or 2, it was actually 1, 2, and, so is there, are there any, does the board have any questions? And if not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve CP-18002, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, in addition to approving the variances to Section 27-442B and D, and disapprove variance to Section 27-442E. Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to remind you about page 25 within the staff report, the recommended condition should have been carried forward.
Oh, yes, for historic preservation, thank you so much.
Thank you. And the motion maker and second are accept that, okay? Is there any discussion? All in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay, so motion two?
Fails.
Fails. Commissioner Geraldo and I opposed, and those, okay. Okay, so we need a new motion.
Madam Chair, I've moved that we-
Mike, what's wrong?
The good old Mike. I learned in sometime, some forums.
Yes, you did.
So I move exactly what Commissioner Washington said, with the exception that I would approve all the variances.
I will sec-
As well as-
Historic preservation.
Historic preservation's comment.
Yes, I will second that motion with the finding that, as explained on the record, as Mr. Rivera explained on the record, those, the, all of the items that he just set forth satisfy the practical difficulties requirements of the Section 27-230A, and therefore, I would agree that all three variants would, should be approved. Is, is there any discussion? All in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we then have a stalemate here, and so the staff recommendation, what is it, what is it that?
It stands.
Yeah.
The staff recommendation would, would, would stand, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, so you have the staff recommend, unless there are any other motions, the staff recommendation would stand. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Okay, thank you. Quickly, because we're due back here too, we're breaking, how long are you going to take?
I'll be very quick, Madam Chair.
Okay, so wait a minute, we have, look, let me just say-
I, I have-
Two.
Two bills.
Alright.
One is CB, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. One bill is CB 42, which exempts daycare, certain daycares from additional specific regu, specific use regulations. We believe that this bill is not needed.
Excuse me, one second, someone left a phone, okay. Okay, okay, go ahead.
We have read this particular one, and we support staff recommended-
Is that a motion?
Second, yes, it's a motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, okay. Then we have CB 45?
Which we also have read and agree with, and-
Staff recommendation.
Yes, indeed.
Second?
Discussion, what, all in favor?
It was Bailey, Washington.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We're going to take a lunch break, we'll be back here by 2:30.
Excellent job, Ms. Hightower, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Board is back in session. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, we need a motion to ratify the action taken in closed session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, is there any additional business to come before Planning Board? Hearing none, Planning Board is adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Great job, everyone.